For a better choice, vote for Dr Patricia Bartlett in Nevis Nine.
As the NRP’s candidate in Nevis Eleven, I pledge to deliver on building our communities. Imagine a better Nevis, we all benefit, not just a few. As your elected representative, I will commit to ensuring that our people are not neglected. I ask you to vote for me, because I understand that the job of representation is about bettering the lives of others, not to enrich oneself. The NRP will see to it that neglect of our fishermen and farmers and community groups, and so many who have suffered under the CCM come to an end. This neglect is unacceptable. Let’s strengthen our bonds by voting for Janice Daniel Hodge on the 5th of August 2022. This election is about the future, that is why the time is now to elect Janice Daniel Hodge, because Janice cares.
Nevis Reformation Party. Nevis Reformation Party. We put Nevis first. We put Nevis first. Dr Janice. Dr Janice. Our party leader. Our party leader. Now they’re not going to stop them, speed up, them can. NRP, yeah, 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 yeah. 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 NRP Party, what we voting for? NRP Party, what we voting for? These are the things we gonna do for you. These are the things we gonna do for you. Make it!
NRP puts Nevis and its people first. Positivity and inclusivity, not negativity and divisiveness. Witness the rise of a green and blue economy that will benefit all the people of Nevis. NRP brings projects and completes projects for the people. Only NRP can deliver renewable energy, food security and job sustainability. We understand the necessity of small businesses and will offer every support. Better educational opportunities through scholarships and applicable technology. Your health is our major concern. All will come to Nevis under NRP. NRP, Nevis Reformation Party. Change must come, not just to some, but to all.
Rohan Isles and Dr Janice Daniel Hodge will represent the Nevis Reformation Party in the general elections of St. Kitts and Nevis. We got an opportunity to speak with all three candidates about their plans and why you should make the NRP your only choice in the upcoming elections.
I think what sets me apart from the other candidates or would be vying for Nevis Nine would be my passion for service. I’ve been working in my community since I would have been a girl at the tender age of ten, and I’ve been of service to my community on a voluntary basis. And I’ve never seen, even though we probably would be around the same age, I’ve never seen the same service being rendered to the community by my opponents. Genuinely, I have a passion to serve. I think I’ve demonstrated that, and I think when you put my service record against their service record, there’s really a fundamental difference. And I think in politics, it really should be about service to the people. If I were to be elected at the federal level and simultaneously at the Nevis Island Assembly level, I think I would have a more progressive approach to what has been taken in the past, in that in the past, Nevisian politicians would go to St. Kitts and they would take a portfolio. I don’t think it is the best strategy. I think you can serve at the level of cabinet, you can serve at the level of parliament without getting involved in the day-to-day running of a ministry in St. Kitts. You can go to cabinet and you can make decisions that impact the lives and the livelihoods of the people in Nevis. However, when you get bogged down with a ministry in St. Kitts, it means you have less time to dedicate to the business of the people of Nevis. So I think that a nuanced approach could be had, something that is different and more progressive than what we have seen up to this point. So I think that one can effectively serve at the level of the Nevis Island administration while simultaneously serving at cabinet level in St. Kitts without a portfolio and do so effectively. I think Brown Hillians should weigh the two candidates and see what they would have offered in the past and what they are likely to offer going forward. I think it’s a matter of choosing style or choosing substance. We have seen the style on the other side, and I think in me, Brown Hillians have seen substance. They have seen someone who has always been dedicated to the development and empowerment of the people of Brown Hill in particular. And I have no reservations whatsoever in saying that I have the confidence in the people of Brown Hill that they would choose me over style. My plans for Nevis Nine are simple. There are some issues that ought to be addressed and ought to be addressed now. The creation of jobs for our youths, I think, should be paramount, and I would like for us to push, at least as a project, a potential project, in the area that can create jobs for our youths. I think the people of Nevis Nine should vote for me, because I’m a better option to what we have. What we have had in the past has not represented our best interests, and I think in the NRP candidates, you would have people who are dedicated to pursuing peace, progress and prosperity for all of the people of Nevis, including number nine.
Every election is important, and that is not just because of the historical context of how we got here, but it is important to vote considering that it is how we charter the forum. This election, however, has critical levels of importance, because we would have seen what we would have gotten in the past relative to what we would have gotten in our immediate situation. And so I want to encourage Nevisians, all Nevisians who have registered and eligible to vote, to go out and vote. It is your vote that determines our future. Service requires an understanding of where people are presently in their lives, and my candidacy presents an opportunity to grant onto the constituents of Nevis Ten that opportunity that has been lost for the past thirty years. It allows them to have some level of upward mobility, to move from the state that they are presently in and not comfortable to a state of being comfortable. What is also important is that it allows families to have that greater outlook on the future, to know that their children and their grandchildren are set to be in a better place when they are of age. I want to encourage young people to understand that it is important for them to impress on this beautiful Tuana Island Federation in new direction, a direction that speaks to where they want to sit in the future. I want to impress on young people to understand that whatever they desire from this country, they must have an input, and that is why it is important that they vote. And not just to vote, but to vote for a Nevis Reformation Party’s candidate, candidates that have demonstrated that they are willing to listen, to partner and to strengthen whatever it is that young people desire to achieve in the future. Nevis Ten currently is a hotbed of opportunities that must be unearthed, and I am willing to begin the digging. What is important for gingerlanders to understand is that they have long been without a development agenda, and there is so much that can be done in gingerland at the moment. My plans are your plans, because it is from listening to you that we have crafted plans and policies. The gingerland public market that can be rebuilt or renovated to include space for food court, that is one of your ideas. You have asked for housing solutions, and we are prepared to bring alternative housing solutions. Housing solutions that meet not just the demands of our people, but the pockets of our people, to ensure that people can truly afford housing in a place they love. Sporting facility development, that is something you have asked for, and we are willing to partner with you in developing sporting facilities. And not just that, but to provide programs that ensure that our young people are engaged in activities that are fit for purpose. There’s so much more that can be achieved in gingerland, and I look forward to working with you, building again in number ten. Government is a dynamic concept, and when we look globally at how governments have over time evolved, we must recognize it is time for us to change. If you are going to meet the growing demands of a population that is diverse, government doesn’t require you to be stagnant or in one place, and so there are many options granted onto Nevisian candidates. You will hear more about ministries without portfolios. Can I understand that the concept being new is difficult to understand, but I want you to understand this: such does not reduce the power and ability of a candidate to effectively serve the Nevisian public. It simply means things are done in the best interest of Nevis without being tied down to Barstir. Additionally, in the days of the late Vance W. Emory, there was the Ministry of U.S. Affairs, and what that does is allow a Nevisian candidate to have the opportunity to sink ministries and to have his or her grounding or office or whatever you would like to call it in Nevis, and so he or she doesn’t have to go to Barstir on a daily. They can work directly from Nevis, serving the best interests of Nevisians, and there are going to be many examples of ministries that that can happen in. But I want us to understand, these are changing times, and the Nevis Reformation Party has always been a party of progress. This is a progressive platform and a progressive idea that I am guaranteeing will serve the best interests of Nevisians. My candidacy presents a golden opportunity for upward mobility. It presents an opportunity for you to move from one level of your life to the next. It presents an opportunity to see your community being developed as you hope it would have been in the past and you desire for the future. That is why you should vote for Rohan Isles in number ten.
As a Federation, the federal cabinet is involved in decision-making and policies that would affect the people of Nevis just as they affect the people of St. Kitts, and so having a seat at the decision-making table allows the perspectives of the people of Nevis to be heard and considered in whatever policies or legislation is being proposed to advance our country going forward. The NRP would likely partner with the political party in St. Kitts that has the confidence of the people of St. Kitts, obviously. Of course, we must look at the mutual objectives of both parties, and we must ensure that in forming partnerships, we understand that our vision must be aligned, and we will want to ensure that whoever we align with, it is in the best interest of the people of Nevis and the country at large. The NRP has one agenda, and that agenda is for the people of Nevis. We must understand that the people’s wishes and the people’s needs must be heard, and any decision taken must reflect the needs of the people, and so NRP is committed to serving the people and to ensure that whatever decisions are made are in the best interest of the people and not self-serving and personal agendas. A video has surfaced with allegations put forth by CCM, and this is really an example of how the CCM intends to mislead the people of Nevis once again. It is clear, and the whole world would know, that had I been involved in corrupt activities, I would not have been invited back to the USPI by the governor, no less, to continue serving the people of the US Virgin Islands. Additionally, it is clear that to be a candidate in the elections in St. Kitts and Nevis, one must relinquish any US citizenship or any foreign citizenship, and I am certain, had there been any issues of corruption or any other allegations that the US government had against me, I am certain that the whole world would have known about them by now. And so in an attempt to mislead the people of Nevis into thinking that there is something untoward with regards to my character, one only needs to look at my launch when I would have presented that information. At my launch, I would have discussed the matter that occurred in the US Virgin Islands, and I am certain that based on my integrity and my moral and ethical upbringing, that is the reason why I would have presented that information, understanding the importance of being transparent. Transparency is something that the CCM government does not understand, and so it is quite clear that being transparent goes a long way with regards to avoiding doubt and minimizing misinformation that the CCM is so comfortable in putting out there to mislead the people of Nevis. The people of Nevis Eleven have been neglected for a number of years. With regards to job opportunities, we recognize that a number of hotels have been closed, and there is no attempt to reopen these hotels. We know that the fishing industry is very vibrant in Nevis Eleven, and so with efforts to modernize and provide improved infrastructure and services, I am certain that the people of Nevis Eleven would be able to benefit from a number of job opportunities. Of course, we must ensure that the cost of living is reduced, this is not only with regards to the people of Nevis Eleven, but on Nevis as a whole, we must ensure that people can begin to enjoy living in Nevis again, and our youths must have that feeling that there is hope for a brighter future for them. The voters of Nevis Eleven should choose me as the representative, because I am committed. I have been involved in community building for a number of years, and it must be based on what the people of Nevis Eleven need to be able to move forward that I would be able to deliver. I have delivered before, and I will be able to deliver again, based on experience, based on the work that I have been doing, and based on the understanding that everybody has a right to a decent standard of living.
Dr Patricia Bartlett, Rohan Isles and Dr Janice Daniel Hodge will represent the Nevis Reformation Party in the general elections of St. Kitts and Nevis. We got an opportunity to speak with all three candidates about their plans and why you should make the NRP your only choice in the upcoming elections.
I think what sets me apart from the other candidates or would be vying for Nevis Nine would be my passion for service. I’ve been working in my community since I would have been a girl at the tender age of ten, and I’ve been of service to my community on a voluntary basis. And I’ve never seen, even though we probably would be around the same age, I’ve never seen the same service being rendered to the community by my opponents. Genuinely, I have a passion to serve. I think I’ve demonstrated that, and I think when you put my service record against their service record, there’s really a fundamental difference, and I think in politics, it really should be about service to the people. If I were to be elected at the federal level and simultaneously at the Nevis Island Assembly level, I think I would have a more progressive approach to what has been taken in the past, in that in the past, Nevisian politicians would go to St. Kitts and they would take a portfolio. I don’t think it is the best strategy. I think you can serve at the level of cabinet, you can serve at the level of parliament without getting involved in the day-to-day running of a ministry in St. Kitts. You can go to cabinet and you can make decisions that impact the lives and the livelihoods of the people in Nevis. However, when you get bogged down with a ministry in St. Kitts, it means you have less time to dedicate to the business of the people of Nevis. So I think that a nuanced approach could be had, something that is different and more progressive than what we have seen up to this point. So I think that one can effectively serve at the level of the Nevis Island administration while simultaneously serving at cabinet level in St. Kitts without a portfolio and do so effectively. I think Brown Hillians should weigh the two candidates and see what they would have offered in the past and what they are likely to offer going forward. I think it’s a matter of choosing style or choosing substance. We have seen the style on the other side, and I think in me, Brown Hillians have seen substance. They have seen someone who has always been dedicated to the development and empowerment of the people of Brown Hill in particular, and I have no reservations whatsoever in saying that I have the confidence in the people of Brown Hill that they would choose me over style. My plans for Nevis Nine are simple. There are some issues that ought to be addressed and ought to be addressed now. The creation of jobs for our youths, I think, should be paramount, and I would like for us to push, at least as a project, a potential project, in the area that can create jobs for our youths. I think the people of Nevis Nine should vote for me, because I’m a better option to what we have. What we have had in the past has not represented our best interests, and I think in the NRP candidates, you would have people who are dedicated to pursuing peace, progress and prosperity for all of the people of Nevis, including number nine.
Every election is important, and that is not just because of the historical context of how we got here, but it is important to vote considering that it is how we charter the forum. This election, however, has critical levels of importance, because we would have seen what we would have gotten in the past relative to what we would have gotten in our immediate situation. And so I want to encourage Nevisians, all Nevisians who have registered and eligible to vote, to go out and vote. It is your vote that determines our future. Service requires an understanding of where people are presently in their lives, and my candidacy presents an opportunity to grant onto the constituents of Nevis Ten that opportunity that has been lost for the past thirty years. It allows them to have some level of upward mobility, to move from the state that they are presently in and not comfortable to a state of being comfortable. What is also important is that it allows families to have that greater outlook on the future, to know that their children and their grandchildren are set to be in a better place when they are of age. I want to encourage young people to understand that it is important for them to impress on this beautiful Tuana Island Federation in new direction, a direction that speaks to where they want to sit in the future. I want to impress on young people to understand that whatever they desire from this country, they must have an input, and that is why it is important that they vote. And not just to vote, but to vote for a Nevis Reformation Party’s candidate, candidates that have demonstrated that they are willing to listen, to partner and to strengthen whatever it is that young people desire to achieve in the future. Nevis Ten currently is a hotbed of opportunities that must be unearthed, and I am willing to begin the digging. What is important for gingerlanders to understand is that they have long been without a development agenda, and there is so much that can be done in gingerland at the moment. My plans are your plans, because it is from listening to you that we have crafted plans and policies. The gingerland public market that can be rebuilt or renovated to include space for food court, that is one of your ideas. You have asked for housing solutions, and we are prepared to bring alternative housing solutions. Housing solutions that meet not just the demands of our people, but the pockets of our people, to ensure that people can truly afford housing in a place they love. Sporting facility development, that is something you have asked for, and we are willing to partner with you in developing sporting facilities. And not just that, but to provide programs that ensure that our young people are engaged in activities that are fit for purpose. There’s so much more that can be achieved in gingerland, and I look forward to working with you, building again in number ten. Government is a dynamic concept, and when we look globally at how governments have over time evolved, we must recognize it is time for us to change. If you are going to meet the growing demands of a population that is diverse, government doesn’t require you to be stagnant or in one place, and so there are many options granted onto Nevisian candidates. You will hear more about ministries without portfolios. Can I understand that the concept being new is difficult to understand, but I want you to understand this: such does not reduce the power and ability of a candidate to effectively serve the Nevisian public. It simply means things are done in the best interest of Nevis without being tied down to Barstir. Additionally, in the days of the late Vance W. Emory, there was the Ministry of U.S. Affairs, and what that does is allow a Nevisian candidate to have the opportunity to sink ministries and to have his or her grounding or office or whatever you would like to call it in Nevis, and so he or she doesn’t have to go to Barstir on a daily. They can work directly from Nevis, serving the best interests of Nevisians, and there are going to be many examples of ministries that that can happen in. But I want us to understand, these are changing times, and the Nevis Reformation Party has always been a party of progress. This is a progressive platform and a progressive idea that I am guaranteeing will serve the best interests of Nevisians. My candidacy presents a golden opportunity for upward mobility. It presents an opportunity for you to move from one level of your life to the next. It presents an opportunity to see your community being developed as you hope it would have been in the past and you desire for the future. That is why you should vote for Rohan Isles in number ten.
As a Federation, the federal cabinet is involved in decision-making and policies that would affect the people of Nevis just as they affect the people of St. Kitts, and so having a seat at the decision-making table allows the perspectives of the people of Nevis to be heard and considered in whatever policies or legislation is being proposed to advance our country going forward. The NRP would likely partner with the political party in St. Kitts that has the confidence of the people of St. Kitts, obviously. Of course, we must look at the mutual objectives of both parties, and we must ensure that in forming partnerships, we understand that our vision must be aligned, and we will want to ensure that whoever we align with, it is in the best interest of the people of Nevis and the country at large. The NRP has one agenda, and that agenda is for the people of Nevis. We must understand that the people’s wishes and the people’s needs must be heard, and any decision taken must reflect the needs of the people, and so NRP is committed to serving the people and to ensure that whatever decisions are made are in the best interest of the people and not self-serving and personal agendas. A video has surfaced with allegations put forth by CCM, and this is really an example of how the CCM intends to mislead the people of Nevis once again. It is clear, and the whole world would know, that had I been involved in corrupt activities, I would not have been invited back to the USPI by the governor, no less, to continue serving the people of the US Virgin Islands. Additionally, it is clear that to be a candidate in the elections in St. Kitts and Nevis, one must relinquish any US citizenship or any foreign citizenship, and I am certain, had there been any issues... And I am certain, had there been any issues of corruption or any other allegations that the US government had against me, I am certain that the whole world would have known about them by now. And so in an attempt to mislead the people of Nevis into thinking that there's something untoward with regards to my character, one only needs to look at my launch when I would have presented that information. At my launch, I would have discussed the matter that occurred in the US Virgin Islands. And I am certain that based on my integrity and my moral and ethical upbringing, that is the reason why I would have presented that information, understanding the importance of being transparent. Transparency is something that the CCM government does not understand. And so it is quite clear that being transparent goes a long way with regards to avoiding doubt and minimizing misinformation that the CCM is so comfortable in putting out there to mislead the people of Nevis. The people of Nevis Eleven have been neglected for a number of years. With regards to job opportunities, we recognize that a number of hotels have been closed and there is no attempt to reopen these hotels. We know that the fishing industry is very vibrant in Nevis Eleven. And so with efforts to modernize and provide improved infrastructure and services, I am certain that the people of Nevis Eleven would be able to benefit from a number of job opportunities. Of course, we must ensure that the cost of living is reduced. This is not only with regards to the people of Nevis Eleven, but on Nevis as a whole, we must ensure that people can begin to enjoy living in Nevis again. And our youths must have that feeling that there is hope for a brighter future for them. The voters of Nevis Eleven should choose me as the representative because I am committed. I have been involved in community building for a number of years. And it must be based on what the people of Nevis Eleven need to be able to move forward that I would be able to deliver. I have delivered before and I will be able to deliver again, based on experience, based on the work that I have been doing and based on the understanding that everybody has a right to a decent standard of living.
Dr. Patricia Bartlett, Rohan Isles and Dr. Janice Daniel Hodge will represent the Nevis Reformation Party in the general elections of St. Kitts and Nevis. We got an opportunity to speak with all three candidates about their plans and why you should make the NRP your only choice in the upcoming elections.
I think what sets me apart from the other candidates or would be vying for Nevis Nine would be my passion for service. I've been working in my community since I would have been a girl at the tender age of ten. And I've been of service to my community on a voluntary basis. And I've never seen, even though we probably would be around the same age, I've never seen the same service being rendered to the community by my opponents. Genuinely, I have a passion to serve. I think I've demonstrated that. And I think when you put my service record against their service record, there's really a fundamental difference. And I think in politics, it really should be about service to the people. If I were to be elected at the federal level and simultaneously at the Nevis Island Assembly level, I think I would have a more progressive approach to what has been taken in the past. In that, in the past, Nevision politicians would go to St. Kitts and they would take a portfolio. I don't think it is the best strategy. I think you can serve at the level of cabinet. You can serve at the level of parliament without getting involved in the day to day running of a ministry in St. Kitts. You can go to cabinet and you can make decisions that impact the lives and the livelihoods of the people in Nevis. However, when you get bogged down with a ministry in St. Kitts, it means you have less time to dedicate to the business of the people of Nevis. So I think that a nuanced approach could be had. Something that is different and more progressive than what we have seen up to this point. So I think that one can effectively serve at the level of the Nevis Island Administration, while simultaneously serving at cabinet level in St. Kitts without a portfolio and do so effectively. I think Brown Hillians should weigh the two candidates and see what they would have offered in the past and what they are likely to offer going forward. I think it's a matter of choosing style or choosing substance. We have seen the style on the other side and I think in me, Brown Hillians have seen substance. They have seen someone who has always been dedicated to the development and empowerment of the people of Brown Hill in particular. And I have no reservations whatsoever in saying that I have the confidence in the people of Brown Hill that they would choose me over style. My plans for Nevis Nine are simple. There are some issues that ought to be addressed and ought to be addressed now. The creation of jobs for our youths, I think, should be paramount. And I would like for us to push, at least as a project, a potential project, in the area that can create jobs for our youths. I think the people of Nevis Nine should vote for me because I'm a better option to what we have. What we have had in the past has not represented our best interests. And I think in the NRP candidates, you would have people who are dedicated to pursuing peace, progress and prosperity for all of the people of Nevis, including number nine.
Every election is important. And that is not just because of the historical context of how we got here. But it is important to vote considering that it is how we charter we follow. This election, however, has critical levels of importance because we would have seen what we would have gotten in the past relative to what we would have gotten in our immediate situation. And so I want to encourage Nevisions, all Nevisions who have registered and eligible to vote, to go out and vote. It is your vote that determines our future. Service requires an understanding of where people are presently in their lives. And my candidacy presents an opportunity to grant unto the constituents of Nevis Ten that opportunity that has been lost for the past thirty years. It allows them to have some level of upward mobility, to move from the state that they are presently in and not comfortable, to a state of being comfortable. What is also important is that it allows families to have that greater outlook on the future, to know that their children and their grandchildren are set to be in a better place when they are of age. I want to encourage young people to understand that it is important for them to impress on this beautiful Toon Island Federation a new direction, a direction that speaks to where they want to sit in the future. I want to impress on young people to understand that whatever they desire from this country, they must have an input. And that is why it is important that they vote. And not just to vote, but to vote for a Nevis Reformation Party's candidate. Candidates that have demonstrated that they are willing to listen, to partner and to strengthen whatever it is that young people desire to achieve in the future. Nevis Ten currently is a hotbed of opportunities that must be unearthed. And I am willing to begin the digging. What is important for Gindalanders to understand is that they have long been without a development agenda. And there is so much that can be done in Gindeland at the moment. My plans are your plans because it is from listening to you that we have crafted plans and policies. The Gindeland public market that can be rebuilt or renovated to include space for food court. That is one of your ideas. You have asked for housing solutions. And we are prepared to bring alternative housing solutions. Housing solutions that meet not just the demands of our people, but the pockets of our people, to ensure that people can truly afford housing in a place they love. Sporting facility development, that is something you have asked for. And we are willing to partner with you in developing the sporting facilities. And not just that, but to provide programs that ensure that our young people are engaged in activities that are fit for purpose. There's so much more that can be achieved in Gindeland. And I look forward to working with you, building again in number ten. Government is a dynamic concept. And when we look globally at how governments have over time evolved, we must recognize it is time for us to change. If we are going to meet the growing demands of a population that is diverse, government doesn't require you to be stagnant or in one place. And so there are many options granted onto Nevision candidates. You will hear more about ministries with portfolio. And I understand that the concept being new is difficult to understand. But I want you to understand this. Such does not reduce the power and ability of a candidate to effectively serve the Nevision public. It simply means things are done in the best interest of Nevis without being tied down to past year. Additionally, in the days of the late Vance W. Emery, there was the Ministry of News and Affairs. And what that does is allow a Nevision candidate to have the opportunity to sync ministries and to have his or her grounding or office or whatever you would like to call it in Nevis. And so he or she doesn't have to go to Barstir on a daily. They can work directly from Nevis, serving the best interest of Nevisions. And there are going to be many examples of ministries that that can happen in. But I want us to understand, these are changing times. And the Nevis Reformation Party has always been a party of progress. This is a progressive platform and a progressive idea that I am guaranteeing will serve the best interests of Nevisions. My candidacy presents a golden opportunity for upward mobility. It presents an opportunity for you to move from one level of your life to the next. It presents an opportunity to see your community being developed as you hope it would have been in the past and you desire for the future. That is why you should vote for Rohan Isles in number ten.
As a Federation, the federal cabinet is involved in decision making and policies that would affect the people of Nevis just as they affect the people of St. Kitts. And so having a seat at the decision making table allows the perspectives of the people of Nevis to be heard and considered in whatever policies or legislation is being proposed to advance our country going forward. The NRP would likely partner with the political party in St. Kitts that has the confidence of the people of St. Kitts, obviously. Of course, we must look at the mutual objectives of both parties. And we must ensure that in forming partnerships, we understand that our vision must be aligned. And we would want to ensure that whoever we align with, it is in the best interest of the people of Nevis and the country at large. The NRP has one agenda and that agenda is for the people of Nevis. We must understand that the people's wishes and the people's needs must be heard and any decision taken must reflect the needs of the people. And so NRP is committed to serving the people and to ensure that whatever decisions are made are in the best interest of the people and not self-serving and personal agendas. A video has surfaced with allegations put forth by its CCM. And this is really an example of how the CCM intends to mislead the people of Nevis once again. It is clear and the whole world would know that had I been involved in corrupt activities, I would not have been invited back to the USPI by the governor, no less, to continue serving the people of the US Virgin Islands. Additionally, it is clear that to be a candidate in the elections in St. Kitts and Nevis, one must relinquish any US citizenship or any foreign citizenship. And I am certain, had there been any issues of corruption or any other allegations that the US government had against me, I am certain that the whole world would have known about them by now. And so in an attempt to mislead the people of Nevis into thinking that there's something untoward with regards to my character, one only needs to look at my launch when I would have presented that information. At my launch, I would have discussed the matter that occurred in the US Virgin Islands. And I am certain that based on my integrity and my moral and ethical upbringing, that is the reason why I would have presented that information, understanding the importance of being transparent. Transparency is something that the CCM government does not understand. And so it is quite clear that being transparent goes a long way with regards to avoiding doubt and minimizing misinformation that the CCM is so comfortable in putting out there to mislead the people of Nevis. The people of Nevis Eleven have been neglected for a number of years. With regards to job opportunities, we recognize that a number of hotels have been closed and there is no attempt to reopen these hotels. We know that the fishing industry is very vibrant in Nevis Eleven. And so with efforts to modernize and provide improved infrastructure and services, I am certain that the people of Nevis Eleven would be able to benefit from a number of job opportunities. Of course, we must ensure that the cost of living is reduced. This is not only with regards to the people of Nevis Eleven, but on Nevis as a whole, we must ensure that people can begin to enjoy living in Nevis again. And our youths must have that feeling.
Got this feeling, feeling, wonderful feeling. Keep the faith and keep on believing. We overcome distress one day. Nevis Reformation Party, NRP, Sister Janice, we voting. Get out the corruptions. Oh. Hey, 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 show me one.
Good night, everyone. We are ready to begin tonight's public meeting. As always, we want to begin the public meeting with a word of prayer. And so I am asking Mr. Llewellyn Paris to come forward and give a word of prayer. Mr. Paris, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We say a word of prayer. Almighty and most powerful God, we of the Nevis Reformation Party come to you this evening, asking for you to be in our presence and to be with us. Father God, you says that we should act and it shall be given. You said to us to knock and the door shall be open unto us. You said seek and we shall find. So mighty God, we have been doing the work, but we dare not do anything without you in the presence and in the midst. So we ask you to bless us this evening with your presence. Mighty God, we have kept it clean according to your word. And we are asking you to bless us as a party. We ask for you to shine upon our candidates. We ask you to pour down on Rohan Isles. Pour down, Lord, on Patricia Bartlett. Pour down on our leader, Dr. Dennis Daniel Hodge. Pour down on J.D. Keynes. Pour down, Lord, on Cleone Stapleton. If ever this country needs you, mighty God, it is now. And we are standing on your promises that you will deliver. So we ask mighty God for you to be with us as the Nevis Reformation Party. You said that faith without work is dead, and we have been doing the work. So we ask mighty God, you who created all things, you who made the impossible possible, that you reign upon us this evening with your mighty power. The people of Nevis have suffered long enough, and we are asking for deliverance. You are a God of a mighty battle. You are a great warrior. And so mighty God, we ask you to fight this battle with us. Be with us in this meeting. Be with our leaders. Be with the people of the Nevis Reformation Party. Because we put our trust in you and we serve you and believe that you are the mighty God. God, we thank you for what you have done for us this far. You have kept our meeting safe. And we thank you for what you are about to do. We thank you for Friday, August 5th, that you will reign with us and give us that victory. If you can part the sea for the people of Israel, you can do the miracle for us. You said that no weapon that form against your people will prosper. So we thank you for what you have done. We thank you for what you are about to do, in Jesus' precious name.
Amen. Can I get an amen? NRP people! I can't hear you! NRP people! NRP, are you ready? Are you ready for victory, NRP? Are you ready for better leadership, NRP? Are you ready for better representation, NRP? NRP, are you ready? Nice, nice, nice. DJ, take it down, DJ, take it down. Listen, we are in the capital city tonight. And so I want the whole of Nevis to know that the NRP is here. I don't want anybody sleeping on me in Charles Town, you know. I don't want anybody sleeping on me in the capital city. So if you came here to sit down, I say get up. If you came here to sleep, I say wake up. Because, NRP, this is our time! Before I get too deep into tonight's meeting, I have a notice here from the police officers. They're asking everyone who's parked on the yellow line behind me to kindly remove your vehicles for that reason, because you're parked on the yellow line. So kindly remove your vehicles. Let us comply with the police officers. And so we are asking everyone who's parked on the yellow line to kindly remove their vehicles at this point in time. Thank you very much for your cooperation. Now, ladies and gentlemen, like I said, we are here for a reason. And the only thing, only discussion I want being had here tonight is about NRP and victory. Save everything else for another time. I don't want to hear about no soaps. I don't want to hear about what the other side is doing. All I want to hear tonight is NRP and victory. NRP, are you ready for victory? God, God, that is what I want tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, we are getting close. Election Day is almost upon us, ladies and gentlemen. We have just a few days remaining before election. As a matter of fact, today is Wednesday, if my memory serves me right. And I'm, you know, I'm still in the cultural atmosphere. So today is Wednesday, if I'm not mistaken, which means we have tomorrow, that is Thursday. And then it's the big day, Election Day. And on Friday, August 5th, who will you be voting for? I can't hear you! On Friday, August 5th, who will you be voting for? Awesome. And so in Nevis 9, St. Paul and St. John, there is only one choice, and that person is... I didn't hear you. There is one choice in Nevis 9, and that person is Dr. Patricia Bartlett. Let me hear you for Dr. Patricia Bartlett. She is the doc with the right prescription. Let me hear you. Bartlett, Bartlett, Bartlett. Awesome! That's what I want tonight. We're gonna wake up Nevis. We're gonna wake them up tonight. We're gonna wake them up tomorrow. And we're gonna wake them up on Friday because we wake up to play. NRP, my save! That's what I'm talking about. We're moving up to Nevis 10. There is only one choice in Gingerland. Who is that person? Let's go Isles, 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 Isles. That's it, that's it. Let's move on over to Nevis 11, St. Thomas and St. James. I maintain there is only one choice. Who is that person? Daniel Hodge. Let me hear you. Daniel Hodge, Daniel Hodge, Daniel Hodge. That's it, that's it. NRP, you sound ready. And so we are ready. We gotta make sure that the rest of Nevis is ready. Because we know that we have some persons who are undecided, and we're gonna work on them. And let me tell you something. It's not the candidates alone who have to work. All of us have a role to play, right down to Election Day. We're not stopping the day before election. We're not even stopping on Election Day. We're fighting until the polls close, NRP. Every single person who is able to vote must go out and vote and vote for the Nevis Reformation Party. NRP, let me tell you. I ain't making joke, eh? I don't like to lose. I don't like to lose. And we have lost quite a bit in the past. And people have suffered as a result of our losses. Because guess what? At the end of the day, we have been the only party that has proven that it's really funny visions. And so our people have suffered as a result of our losses. We want no more suffering on the island of Nevis. And that is why we have to send Janice, Daniel Hodge, Patricia Bartlett, and Rohan Isles to the federal cabinet to represent us. Listen, imagine, imagine. We had three persons poised to represent us. We chose them to represent us. They went, they failed. Now tell me why we should give them another chance? They went and they failed. Why should we give them another chance? I say nothing to Algo So. We not taking back any rejects. We move it with the performance team. We move it with the NRP team. Ladies and gentlemen, it's not all about me. And I know we had a great, a late start, sorry. And so I am going to pause here as I invite our first speaker for the night. And that person is the chairman of our political party, a former candidate. He is Mr. Hensley Daniel. A round of applause as we welcome Mr. Daniel. DJ, hit me with something. I want energy all night, all night. That's it. That's it, NRP. Let's go, let's go!
Brothers and sisters of the Nevis Reformation Party, are you ready to rumble? Do you feel the victory? Do you sense the victory? And so brothers and sisters, we have come this evening. Just my role as the chairman is to make sure that we send the three representatives to the parliament in St. Kitts. So let us hear you for those in Number 9, for Patricia Bartlett. Can I hear you? I need some more noise for Patricia Bartlett. You know why we need some more noise for Patricia Bartlett? She is running in the second largest constituency of the 11 constituencies. Only Number 8 is larger than Number 9. So we have to give her a special, special call. We are going to Gingerland because we want Rohan Isles. So let me hear you for Rohan Isles. Brothers and sisters, you know why we going up to Gingerland for Rohan? The fellow who is running up there say, if we not going to vote for him, he is damn forward, talk about we mustn't go to vote. Out of order! So Gingerland people, are you going to vote? Gingerland people, are you going to vote? Out of order! Come tell us, if we not going to vote for him, we must not go to vote. We fought long and hard to be able to get the right to vote. And so Gingerland people, send him a message. Friday morning, turn out in your numbers and vote for Rohan Isles. So let me hear it for Rohan. And of course, ladies and gentlemen, brothers and sisters, when we go to 11, we are going to be rooting from butlers right down to dress ups. Are you ready to root for the leader of the Nevis Reformation Party? I want more noise than that for the leader. Let me hear you again for Janice. You know, brothers and sisters, Llewellyn and I were out today, right through the constituencies. And the one temper we are getting changed must come. Time for a change. And to the Spanish friends, I say, vamos a ganar, vamos a ganar. Entonces van a votar viernes. Oiga me, vamos a ganar. And so brothers and sisters, we are saying to us, we have campaigned, we have been in your houses, we have been on the radio. How many radio programs we have? 10? We have radio programs on Monday. We have on Wednesday. We have on Thursday. We have on Saturday. So we have carried the message. We have been in the houses. We have been in the public meetings. And so come Friday is whip, warp, action. You agree with me? Whip, warp, action on Friday. Yes, because brothers and sisters, if you get fired, how you going back down to St. Kitts? We in the Nevis Reformation Party say there must be a clean sweep, clean sweep, clean sweep Friday. You can't come down, get fired for laziness, get fired for incompetence, and show up the next morning to go look the same work? No, the society is looking at us. The rest of the world is looking at us. We can't reward failure. We can't reward incompetence. We can't reward laziness. We have to reward the work that is being done by Janice, Patricia, and Rohan. Do you agree with me? Do you agree with me? That we are to reward the work that has been done by Janice, Patricia, and Rohan? And so Friday morning, as I like to say, don't go to vote alone. Walk with your cousin, walk with your friend, walk with your auntie, walk with your grandmother, walk with all of the people who you relate to. Because we have a mission. Our mission is to send Janice, Patricia, and Rohan to the parliament in St. Kitts. Do you agree with me? That this must be our mission? We have a mission to do this. Brothers and sisters, in Number 11 where Janice is running, we have something to deal with. We have a minister who is out of order. But you know what we going to do in Number 11? All the people in Number 11, let me hear you say, yeah, yeah. Number 11, St. Thomas and St. James. Number 11, let me hear you. We are going to put a licking on his backside because he was out of order to suggest that he not run against nobody. We don't do that in politics, brothers and sisters. We maintain in the Nevis Reformation Party a particular standard of conduct and behavior. And when we find somebody that loose and reckless, you must come down like a mighty army. Come down like a mighty army to teach him a lesson. And all the women in this country, all the women in Number 11, all the women in Number 10, and all the women in Number 9 must see this as an insult to women. And they don't say that about men. He never said it about men. But brothers and sisters, I want you to bear this in mind. The women of the country must go to the polls on Friday and send a message in Number 11 to Zook Jeffers that this kind of behavior will not be tolerated. Are you agreeing with me, women? Are you agreeing with me? Make some noise for our women. We in the Nevis Reformation Party lift up our women. CCM want to pull down our women. And so we are going to vote to lift up our women on Friday morning. And so brothers and sisters, let us bear this in mind. Votes count. And there are persons who are saying, foolishness, foolishness. You must go, you must go and put your X for the Nevis Reformation Party. Go and put your X for the Nevis Reformation Party. We have come because we have in the three candidates. We have the capacity, we have the integrity, and we have the ability. Is that frightening, CCM? Janice, Patricia, and Rohan have what it takes to be in government. And I can tell you what it takes to be in government because I've been there, done that. So I know that Janice is good. I know that Patricia is good. And I know that Rohan is good because I've been there, done that. Give them a round of applause so that we could encourage them, support them as we roll in the next 24 hours. Brothers and sisters, just one note. If you don't have your voter's ID, you could vote with your driver's license, your social security card, and your passport is your best ID. So don't let nobody tell you that they can't find you. Look, go check to find your name. Because you know what happens? Sometimes you find your name Wednesday, and by Friday you can't find your name, you know. You got, when you're dealing with worthless people, you got to make sure you do everything. So when you go to vote, you have your voter's ID, but still walk with your social security. but still walk with your social security and your driver's license and your passport. CCM must not get away from us this time around. Do you agree? They must not get away. They have failed you, and they have come back to tell you, even though I fail, send me back? Oh, no, 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 no. I used to teach brothers and sisters, when you fail the exam, you get time to go study, to write it over, or as we say, you stop back. You stop back, we don't promote you. So what we going to do with them Friday? We gonna stop them back. That is why you going say, we gonna let them repeat in Nevis. They gonna repeat in Nevis. Brothers and sisters, all around the world, people are expecting us in Nevis to send a clear message that this level of incompetence must not continue. So I'm asking you, ask our brothers and sisters in the diaspora, ask all of them in the US Virgin Islands and wherever else to use their influence to get our people to go to vote. Because brothers and sisters, if we don't go to vote, we are going to have a problem. We need every man, Jan, in the Nevis Reformation Party to go and vote. Are you going to vote? Are you going to vote? Yes. We want to make, when you listen, when you listen to the candidates, they have programs for education, they have things to do for health, they have things to do to eradicate poverty, they have things for renewable energy, they have things for every single person. And Rohan has a plan of ten thousand dollar plan for households. So when you go to the polls, you're voting based on what the candidates have said. Janice has been leading on energy. We are supposed to do renewable energy, the money is down there. Patricia is leading on poverty, to eradicate poverty. Rohan is leading on training and science and technology. What more do you want from the candidates? They have outlined their programs. And to Friday is deliverance time. In Llewellyn's prayer, we need deliverance from CCM. Do you not agree? We need deliverance from CCM. But I want to tell you something, brothers and sisters. Someone just told me, a young man stopped me about twenty minutes ago and said to me, look, Mr. Daniel, are you going to vote? But I want to remind you politicians, we are the ones with the power in our hands. And he's correct. He says, we are the ones with the power in your hands. So this young man is saying, they have the power. And so brothers and sisters, exercise your power, remember? The people in Charles Town go out to vote, you know why? Up until nineteen fifty-two, and that's not a long time ago, only three people in Charles Town could vote, three men with property. So if you didn't have no property, you couldn't vote. Only three men could vote, only men with property could vote. Now everybody could vote. Don't spoil it, don't sell it, don't sell the vote, don't sell it. It's too precious to be sold, don't sell the vote. Do you agree with me? Not to sell the vote, don't sell the vote, the vote. Yes, don't sell the vote, people. When a man comes to buy your vote, it is an indication that he has failed you. Every failing politician resorts to buying the vote. I am sure you have seen Patricia, you have seen Janice, and you have seen Rohan. Not one of them plan to buy your vote. And that is why they have put the programs for you so that you will be in a position to look after yourselves and your family. Brothers and sisters, I think we have a golden opportunity. And we have a golden opportunity on Friday. Do you agree with me? We have a golden opportunity on Friday. We have a golden opportunity to send home Mark because he's still talking. When he began in two thousand and seven, his strength and his only strength was and still is this amazing ability to talk foolishness in standard English. Nothing else to the table, nothing else. And so brothers and sisters, we are going to deal with them surgically, one by one. But here is how you do it. Line up your friends and relatives tomorrow, get them ready to go to vote so that by two o'clock in the afternoon, all we are doing is looking for the bonus. All NRP supporters go to vote before midday on Friday. Do you agree with me? NRP supporters go to vote before midday. You know why? The current going off in St. James regularly. The current going off all over the place, and they might just take off the current if they see that they losing. So brothers and sisters, go vote before twelve o'clock. Put in all the NRP people before twelve o'clock because current going off, water going off, or internet going down, they plan to mash up your program. But get in the polling station and vote before twelve o'clock. Do you agree with me? You should do this. Do you agree with me? Yes, yes. Do it, do it, do it. Because we want the votes, we don't know. Those people in St. James, you haven't got, you got backwater and electricity yet? You notice? I was by the NRP office today, and as soon as I got in, they say current gone. So they got the thing well lined up. So make sure you go to vote early, carry your friends, and those who need transportation and all the things, let the agents know. I am looking forward to victory on Friday night. Are you? Are you looking forward to victory on Friday night? Do you think we could bang? Look here, let me tell you something, brothers and sisters. We banged them already, and we gonna bang them again. We banged them already, and we gonna bang them again under the Nevis Reformation Party. So brothers and sisters, I leave you with this one simple idea. If you don't go to vote, all NRP supporters who do not vote, when you do not vote, you are giving the vote for CCM. Do you agree? Yes. And so brothers and sisters, there were two supporters in behalf of NRP. I can call their names, Celestine Byron and Miss Hobson. Lucina Hobson. You know why? I used to talk to them. Polling station open six o'clock, five o'clock these two women, one of them eighty-something, they gone early. You know what they said? In case it rain, me done up yard. In case anything happen, me done in the line. Let us do it in memory of those two women. Five o'clock in the morning, Miss Byron make she tea. Miss Byron done make she tea, put a biscuit in the bag, and Miss Hobson got them things. They say them trust no cloud, trust no cloud, especially when CCM is in power. So do like Lucina Hobson and Celestine Byron. Polls open seven o'clock, five o'clock, Miss Byron done reach a polling station, right? And so I leave you, brothers and sisters, with this simple thought. If you don't go, you are giving CCM a chance to win. And I'm simply reminding you, we banged them already, and we gonna bang them again. Thank you.
Energy, energy, energy! NRP, you ready? Are you ready to? Nice, nice, nice. Loving it, I loving it, I loving it. Charles Town, are you here, Charles Town? Nice, nice, nice. Ladies and gentlemen, for tonight's meeting, we are switching things up a bit. We are switching things up a bit, okay? Because we want the focus tonight to be mainly on the lady who we are going to elect in Nevis nine. And she is Dr. Patricia Bartlett, okay? And so she will speak a little later down. The person I am going to invite to speak to you at this point in time is the leader of the Nevis Reformation Party. The person I am going to invite to speak to you shortly is the lady who is ruffling feathers over in St. James. The person I am going to invite to speak with you shortly is the one who has everybody frightened. The person I am going to invite to speak to you shortly has a record of performance, and that is why she is a member of the Nevis Reformation Party. The party that says performance matters. Man, when they realize that she was doing well and that she was resonating well with the people, the people liked what they were hearing, they liked her vibe, what did they do? What did they do? Man, they start all kind of rumors. They try everything possible to dirty her name. But we know that we have a woman of class. We know we have a leader with character. We know we have the best choice in the Nevis Reformation Party for Nevis eleven. And so, NRP massive, Nevis massive, everyone here, I want you to get to your feet as we welcome our party leader, the lady who is going to unseat the gentleman who was fired in Saint Kitts. Ladies and gentlemen, help me welcome Dr. 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 Janice Daniel Hodge.
Everybody. Everybody. Good night, everybody. NRP people. St. James's people. St. Thomas's people. St. George's people. St. John's people. Nevis people, Nevis people, all of you. Welcome, welcome, welcome. Because, because this is NRP time. This is our time. We started this campaign, and we said, change must come. We said, change must come. And we could see the change coming. We could see the change coming because, because we understand that performance matters. But some people don't understand that. Some people think you elect them, and they show up in a pretty socks and a pretty suit, and that is good enough for Nevis people. But we know, we know what true representation is. And we are saying, nowhere can you have a set of people fired for not performing, and you want to come back and ask for the same job. It can't happen. And as my girlfriend Rohan has said, not this time, not this time. It's not going to happen this time. And so I'm saying to you, the people of Nevis, understand that we are here because we have a federal election three years early. And we have it three years early because some people got fired. And why did they get fired? They sat in the legislature, they sat in Saint Kitts for seven years, seven years, and did not do what they were supposed to do. And so they come and they talk about, send us back so we can do what you sent us to do the first time. Now does that make sense? Does that make sense? Send them back to do what? They failed, they have failed. The people of Nevis understand that the CCM representatives would have failed us. And when we speak and we talk about accountability, it seems like these people do not like to count. And we know that you must give account when you get monies. And so we look at the issue, the four hundred million dollars. I know they get nightmares about four hundred million dollars. Now we understand five hundred million dollars. Now they asking me to look this way, and my people are this way. So how, how am I supposed to do this? I want to be talking to my people. So I, I am going to look at this way sometimes and this way sometimes. But understand, after seven years, after seven years of not doing the one thing that they campaigned about, give me, give me three seats. And I will make sure that the people of Nevis get their fair share. That is what they said. And we know now, we know now that the party that knows very well how to lie, knows very well how to mislead the people of Nevis, they come back this time, and they're trying to mislead the people of Nevis again. And we must say, as my good friend Rohan would say, not this time, not this time. You cannot fool the people of Nevis this time again. And so, four hundred million dollars. And where is the money? Where the money gone? Where the money gone? Started the Wallaby Pier, it's not finished. Started the hospital, not finished. Started the monitor, not finished. And they want to tell the people of Nevis that that is where your four hundred million dollars is. But we know how to count, we know how to count, and we are saying, that is not four hundred million dollars. We want the four hundred million dollars. We want our four hundred million dollars. And so, do not come and say, oh, all they talking about is four hundred million dollars. But of course, we must speak about that. So when we say that the CCM representatives do not feel that they have to give account to the people of Nevis, then we know that is the reason why they must be fired. They must be fired, and we have to make sure we get rid of them in this election coming up. We must get rid of them because we send them, we send them to work for us, and they're gonna come back and say they don't have to give account to us. And so we must get rid of them, it's time, it is time to get rid of them and put people who can represent NRP, represent the people of Nevis into government. And so we see the four hundred million dollars. Four hundred million dollars cannot give account of it. And so we say, well, listen, it is not just the money that they mismanaged and wasted. When they got into government and they saw the NRP had a brand new fisheries complex right over here at Gallo's Bay, and that CCM government got rid of the project. Got rid of the project. And so we, we must begin to ask, where is the concern for developing Nevis? When you can meet these projects, ready to go, and you allow it to disappear to a different country, we know that CCM does not care about the people of Nevis. They do not care about the people of Nevis. And when we say, when we say that performance matters, and when we say that Nevis is the first priority of the NRP, you can be a- you can be assured that with NRP representative, you can be assured that you would get the representation that you deserve. Now, we know that they don't like to count, they can't count, but we can count and we're going to hold them accountable. When we look at what is happening in Nevis, when we look at businesses closing, when we look at the hotels that have closed and when we are going to listen to the premier say, "It is a business decision." It is a business decision. And so, he could not care less if he would have given millions of dollars in concession to a business coming into Nevis to make sure that we have employment opportunities for our people. And when that business decides it's time for us to pack up and go, our premier sits back and said, "Well, it's a business decision." That is not representation for the people of Nevis. That is not representation. And we are saying, under NRP, with NRP representation, we must ensure that Nevis is a place where investors are willing to come. We don't want them to stay out on the ocean. We want them to feel that they can trust, that they can trust the government of Nevis and come and make their investment here. And so, we are saying, our economy on the CCM representation has been going downhill. Has been going downhill. And we must say, we must say that when you have a government that does not respond to the needs of the people, when you have a government that recognizes during a pandemic, they can cut your electricity, during a pandemic, they can increase your water bill, when you have a government who sits back and have geothermal just waiting to be developed to help the people of Nevis, that is too much work. That is too much work. And so, what they decided to do? Take a loan, a $12 million loan when they got $400 million. Take $12 million loan to buy a diesel generator and now people cannot afford to pay the electricity bill. And so, we are saying, there is no heart, there is no compassion in CCM for the struggles of the people of Nevis. And we are saying, when our economy is struggling, the people of Nevis will struggle. And when the government does not understand and does not respond to your need, we must say, "It is time to get rid of them." We must get rid of them. Now, I, I decided, you know, NRP is a party that is a pioneering party. NRP is a party that understands what is required to develop a country. NRP is the party that elected the first female leader of a national political party in St Kees and Nevis. And so, now, now, when we hear the other parties talking about, "Well, we have women candidates," well, NRP already recognizes that this is the time, these are the challenging times where we need compassion and caring representation and NRP has led the charge. NRP has led the charge. And so, NRP will continue to lead the charge. And when we say "change must come", when we say "change must come", we're not just speaking about changing government. We are talking about changing the direction of Nevis. We know that we must, we must bring sustainability to Nevis. We must create job opportunities. And you know, tonight I said, "I was not going to speak for a long time." But I must give you some of the reasons, just a few reasons, why on Friday, August 5th, you must mark your X for NRP. On Friday, August 5th, you must mark your X for NRP because we know that Nevis cannot continue in the direction in which it is going. And so, when we look at what new development has occurred in Nevis over the last seven years, you must scratch your head because you're not seeing it. And when we look at our natural resources, I mentioned geothermal. Imagine what your electricity bill would be like if you were using our natural resource that is free. Yes, it would cost $92 million to develop geothermal energy, but we had $400 million and we cannot see, we cannot see where that $400 million went to. And so, we must say, we must say, there must be a focus and there must be a vision. And the Nevis Reformation Party has that vision of where we want to take Nevis. We must be self-reliant. We must be able to take care of our needs. And so, when we look at our natural resources, nothing done with geothermal. While at the same time in St Kees, you have millions of dollars invested in renewable energy. Where is the focus on Nevis? We have looked at the development of Nevis. One of the things we recognize is that the youth in this place, the youth in Nevis do not have access to job opportunities. Again, we look at our natural resources and I'm only going to give you a brief overview right now because when we look at mango, we know the importance of mangoes. We know everybody has a mango tree. And what is so difficult if your focus is on food security? Food security and sustainability? What is so difficult in starting to harvest and to develop a mango industry that can create jobs for our youths? Why do you have to go inside the supermarket and buy dull mango chunks when we have mangoes here? And so, we talk about food security and we're not doing what is necessary in order to enhance our food security. But I say to you again, NRP has a vision and NRP has a plan to make sure, to make sure that Nevis can be nice again. We can remember when Nevis was nice. And all of you can remember, Nevis was nice under NRP. Nevis was nice under NRP, the NRP government. And we know, we know that the people of Nevis are struggling under the CCM government. And that is why we say, "Change must come" and we must, we must get rid of them. Now, August 5th, I am encouraging everyone to come out and vote. This is no ordinary election. This is no ordinary election. For the first time in the history of Nevis, we had three representatives of one party going to St Kees. For the first time in the history, all three of them got fired. For the first time in the history of Nevis, we have seen the people of Nevis struggling in a way that they have not struggled before. And we are saying, "It is up to us, it is up to me, it is up to you." And I will say to you tonight, I have taken that step. Some people said, "You're courageous, you're bold." Some people say, "I didn't see you as a politician." But guess what? The way that you define politicians, the politicians that we have now, don't call me a politician if that is what a politician is. Call me a politician when you know that you need someone who's going to represent your interests. You want to have someone who cares and understand that your politician is supposed to be working for the people to make life better for the people. And yes, that is the kind of politician that I am. And so, on August 5th, on August 5th, this is the time when we begin to make that change. When we begin to make that change and understand and recognize that we must take responsibility to put Nevis back on the right direction, back to a part where we can say, "Nevis is nice again." We must make Nevis nice again. This is our Nevis. This is our Nevis. And let us all, let us all take that responsibility because this is our time. This is our time. No more victimization, no more divisiveness. This is the time for us to start working together as one because we know that some people, for them, government is about mashing up. For NRP, governance is about uniting, coming together, working together. We need to put an end to the divisiveness and make Nevis nice again. And so, on August 5th, I ask each and every one of you to exercise your right. Exercise your right and be a part of that change because there will be change. There will be change. There will be change. And I'm telling each one of you, exercise your right and be a part of that change. You do not want when you wake up on Saturday morning, because we know it's Saturday morning, we're going to find out. You do not want when you wake up on Saturday morning and you see that big green truck moving out and you say, "Boy, I wish I did the right thing." I am saying, be a part of that change. Each one of us. If we want to have a brighter future for our youth, if we want to ensure that we can live together in harmony in Nevis and across the region, we must exercise our right and vote. Vote for NRP. Vote in number nine for Dr Patricia Bartlett. The no nonsense. The no nonsense. Dr Patricia Bartlett. In number 10, make sure our protector, Rohan Isles. Rohan Isles. And in number 11. In number 11. In number 11. In number 11. And I can assure you, I can assure you, when you made your X for Dr Bartlett and Rohan Isles and myself, you can be assured that you will have good effective representation because I know I will not lead them, I will not lead them to the brink of hell. I will not lead them to the gates of hell. And I know if I look over and I say, "Dr Bartlett, let's go down this road." You know, Dr Bartlett, no nonsense. You know Rohan Isles. And so, I am saying, we must have effective representation. We must have a team that can work together and strengthen each other and take Nevis on a path to new direction, new sustainable, new opportunities for our youths and make the people of Nevis proud again. Remember when we were proud to be Nevisians? Remember when Nevis was nice? Remember when Nevis was nice? And so, I say, with your NRP, just imagine, imagine a better Nevis. Imagine a better Nevis. You will get a better Nevis with representation from the Nevis Reformation Party because Nevis is our first priority. Everybody, good night. Thank you very much. On August 5th, on August 5th, come out and vote. On August 5th, please come out and vote. Do not, do not sit on the fence. Do not sit on the fence. This is the time for us to make Nevis nice again. This is the time for us. I want all of you, I want all of you to be happy. I want all of you to be happy on Saturday. Be a part of that change. Put Nevis in new direction. Everybody, good night. Thank you so very much. Thank you, thank you.
Janice de Fola people. She's a good leader. Let's hear it for our candidate for Nevis 11, Dr Janice Daniel Hodge. Daniel Hodge. Daniel Hodge. Daniel Hodge. Ladies and gentlemen, she sounds like she's ready. But she can only get there if you help her to get there. Are you going to help her? Remember, we are not going to stop the fight before Election Day. We are not even going to stop the fight on Election Day. We are going right down to the wire, ladies and gentlemen. Because we must take Nevis back. And a lot of people like to say, "Man, I can vote in the local, but I'm not into the federal." Let me tell you something. We done with that this time around. We done with that this time around. When you vote for these three candidates at the federal level, you are setting the tone for the local level. You understand? And so, we need everybody to go out and vote. How you gonna sit home Friday and come back whenever they ring the bell in Nevis and say you're going to vote? No, come out and vote. And so, make sure that your boyfriend, your husband, your wife, your child, your sister, your brother, everybody, your neighbor, everybody goes out and vote and they vote for the Nevis Reformation Party. Now, if you are in constituency number 11, that's St Thomas and St James, please make sure you know in advance where you are expected to place your X, okay? Make sure you know in advance where you are expected to place your X. I see it's raining. Star. So, if you are in Nevis 11, your polling stations are: 1, the Nevis Performing Arts Center in Pinney's; 2A, the Jessup's Community Center; 2B, the Jessup's Community Center; 3, the Cotton Ground Community Center; 4A, the VOJN Primary School; 4B, the VOJN Primary School; 5, Trinity Methodist Church Hall; 6, Franklin Brown Community Center; 7A, the Baptist Church in Brick Hill; and 7B, the Butler's Community Center. Those are the polling stations in Nevis 11, St Thomas and St James. And the polls are open from 7:00 in the morning to 6:00 in the evening. You must be in line between those times. I am asking you, do not wait until 5:30 to say you're going to vote. Do not wait until 5:45 to say you're going to vote. If you need a lift, we could get you there. Let us know you need a lift. If you don't have anybody to hold your child when you vote, let us know. We gonna pick you and your child up, hold your child while you go in and give your X and then we give you back your child. Don't be afraid to call us. I don't test out bringing out all she ties, you know? Because she cheering some ties on Friday. Because if we got to pick up people with children, they're gonna get ties to play with. We not leaving anybody behind on Friday. So, I gave you the polling stations for Nevis men. I'm going to invite now the next speaker and then I'll update you on some more polling stations. Remember to check before Friday where you are expected to vote. And if you realize something is suspicious or you don't see your name, reach out to us. Do not wait until Friday to say, "I don't see my name"[1698.08] Do not wait until Friday to say, I don't see my name, because we know they trying all kind of things. What they call momentum is nothing more than intimidation. They calling it momentum, but it is intimidation. They want to frighten us, but that be no hoof of frightened. Ladies and gentlemen, help me bring on, help me bring on the man with the plan. The man with the plan. Let me tell you, he is the one who has caused the representative for Nevis 10 to go house to house for the first time ever. We never see them campaigning. They couldn't be bothered with Nevis 10. All of a sudden, you see a big, strong man. Emphasis on man coming forward in Nevis 10 and they get frightened and they start to run. They start to scrabble when they see the big, strong man coming forward. And help me welcome the big, strong man to the podium. Ladies and gentlemen, let us bring on none other than Rohan, Rohan Michael Ailes.
Easily my dono me Jalano voice to get to youths, you know, representing, you know, I mean Nevis. Yeah, and we representing for the NRP. Remember, this is Rohan Ailes. A better way for the youths, you know, prospering people. Listen me now, people, listen. Hey, young Nevis, me begging you, please place your vote for Rohan Ailes today. Come roll with the NRP and get better men right away.
Good night, good night, good night, good night. NRP people, good night. Whether you're here or you're in the house for a pleasant good night to you. Good night to Karikam brothers and sisters as well, who are here with us. It is good to be in the NRP. And it is good to be on the team led by Dr. Janice Danielle Hodge. And supported by the doctor with the right prescription, Dr. Patricia Bartlett. I am the thorn among the roses and it is a good place to be when you have competent leadership. It is always good. We are here tonight in support of the people's candidate. The candidate who is going to take number nine and return number nine to a place of prosperity, honesty, accountability, because that is the NRP's way. And so I am here to support my family and colleague, Dr. Patricia Bartlett. And to say to the wonderful people of St. Paul and St. John's, your time is coming. Friday is that day of reckoning. And a new direction and a better way is there for you. We have heard much about fear sheer. That is the premise on which we have come to you, the electorate, three years early. And it has been a case of fear sheer for whom? Because when the people of Nevis has asked for fear sheer and fear representation, we have yet to get an answer. $500 million and still no proper arrival and departure facilities at the Holy Pier. $500 million on and the mondo track is still just that, a mondo track. No facilities for our children to change their clothes. Well, they gonna tell you the bathroom is there because there's always a plaster for every sewer they have created. But what is the purpose of facility when we can't use it and use it well to maximize the potential of our young people to grant them opportunities to move from one level to the next? We have wasted seven years. And when we talk about seven years, we have to ask ourselves, because for the first five years, they told you, this is the best thing that has ever happened to Nevis. They told you the gentleman was the best thing since sliced bread. His economic acumen was rated among everybody else in the region. He was a master accountant. Everything was good and dandy. Until they recognized that the new and transformed NRP wasn't messing around. We were coming hard and we meant business. We were coming to retake Nevis for worse men and give it to prosperous women and a man who was willing to support them. And because the pressure was too much to handle, he decided he gonna mash up the thing. Because that is his philosophy. He like to mash up things. When he done mash up things, it's somebody else to blame. So now we come and tell you, the guy ain't so nice. Well, I want to ask you, what is it you're going to send them back for? When seven years they lied to you about what was going on in their relationship? And we like to talk about trust. They told you it was fine and then they come to tell you it not so good. So what you gonna send them back for? What are you going to send them back for? Now, you know, they have come to you and they have said, listen, Pam Sissiam is the ideal arrangement. You know, much about Pam. But they gonna tell you, what would respectable pollsters say? That Pam will not feature. No me say so. Pam will not feature in this general election. Well, if Pam not going feature and Pam are their partner, why you gonna vote for them for? What is it you're going to vote for them for? Their partner will not feature in this election? So tell them, go back in the wilderness. They know nothing about governance, so let them see if they can master the art of growing grass. It is time for us to say, so long, bye-bye. Come on, y'all, help me say it. So long. It is time to say so long to your pain and your sorrows that has been levied against you by a government that couldn't care less if you had food to eat, if you have a job to go to. They only cared about themselves. And so, my friends, it is time for you to say so long, bye-bye. They are of no moment and consequently they are out of time. From this very same spot, during the attempted destruction, I said to them, I said to you, not this time. We are not afraid. We will never be afraid again because we have come to restore decency and honesty to the people of Nevis. That is why we are here in Charlestown and why we are here for this election. When we talk about fear sheer, I want you to remember that in the heart of COVID, COVID, when leading economists were saying, listen, you have got to give the most vulnerable among you some liquidity. Give them some money. Ease the burden on their minds. Give them some level of comfort. And grant your economies an opportunity to recover in a post-COVID time. And while we got that from the federal government and the visions should have been smiling from ear to ear because this administration should have been able to add a little 500 and say, here, put that on the 1,000 and make do as we continue to find ways to prosper you. But you know what they say? They say no money there. No money there. $500 million and they got a heart to talk about somebody named Houdini. Well, we know where Houdini is, you know? We know where Houdini is if you know where the big blue machine there as they call themselves. Houdinis are resting comfortably in there and in their pockets are the people's money. The visions, it is time for you to stand up, be accountable and responsible. On August 5th, it is time to say, no more shall we. Okay, that is where Houdini is because nobody there can explain where 500 million went. They can't tell you in the pier. The pier ain't got an arrival and departure terminal. They can't tell you it is in housing because they just rushed to five sides around the place to put down a house that homeowners are now complaining that they won't build properly. They can't tell you they provided education, opportunities for our young people because the young people are still here moaning and asking, what is in it for us? They can't say that they have provided job opportunities when the job unemployment rate is still so very high. So where is our $500 million? That is an important question. The NRP is ready to give you answers because that has always been our platform, being accountable and transparent. When in the heart of COVID, it was time for you to get your severance pay. And you begged, you pleaded, please, at least some intervention. They say that is a federal issue. When the unestablished workers called and beckoned, listening, it's been a long time. Some of us work in 40 years. We want to go home with something. They said that too is a federal issue. They say going to the Constitution is too much work to ensure that Nevis's fear, equitable, rightful sheer is enshrined in the Constitution. So no matter who is leading in Bastia and no matter who is leading in Nevis, what belongs to the Nevisians will always be there. They said that was too much work. Well, somebody help me there. Well, what do you mean go far? They were in the federal cabinet and you ask them, they say the federal issue, so what were they doing? I gonna tell you what they were doing. The prime minister said they were absent. They were absent in mind and physically because they do not understand governance. How you gonna tell people things at federal level and you on the federal cabinet? But they had no problem. They had absolutely no problem recognizing their federal power when they advanced the cause of one of their own. And so nothing for you, but everything for them. No severance help from them for you, but they gonna get. It is time for you to wake up, get up, stand up, be counted. Let them understand that you are not taking anymore Malaki. Can't say what I want to say. From them. Now, they say they sat in cabinet and they agreed to 15%, not 10. They say it was 15. The prime minister said 10% and all of a sudden, it is them, it is not him. They, and then time to pay 10%. My fellow citizens in residence, utter nonsense gonna come down. So you tell how you're going to get five now, five next year, five after that to make you feel that the addition of the numbers 15 is greater than 10. But tonight I want to tell him and tell them, they ain't getting another chance to say they are going to give the Nevisians any 5%. The NRP is going to take over government and to give the people their rightful percentage, you are getting that extra 5% as soon as we're getting. It is your money budgeted for. They say they can't find it or somebody tell me they find it. They say a tongue over the blue bags vote the place. And then I realize now, you can't find $800 extra a month to pay people. But you're finding the thousands to bring them in to vote. The visions, I want to plead with you and I want to beg you, those of you who are living here. I have no problem with people who want to come home to vote. But you can no longer stay at home. Say you're not going to vote. Get a government you don't want and then coast from now until five years to say this not fear and this not right. You want to know what is fear and you want to know what is right? It's for you to ignore the voice of the negative that said if you're not voting for them to stay home. It is time for you to finally get up, get out, go and vote for a future that you want. Go and vote for a future you hope for, go and vote for a future you desire. Go and vote for prosperity, sustain prosperity for not just you, but for your children and your children's children. The NRP is ready to take you on that journey. This is what is important. And so for those who journey to Bastia only to be fired, it is time for us to sing in one accord, get rid of them. It is time to do. It's time to get rid of them. It's time to get rid of them. I want to tell you, August 5th is coming. We are asking you and we are begging you to get out early. Ensure you have your voter identification, any government issued card or ID will do. Get to the polls, make sure your names are there. Vote early, go home, relax, enjoy the count and then come celebrate with the NRP as we take our trip to Bastia to give fear and honest representation, to bring prosperity to our people, for our people to become fertile again, for our people to be happy again, for Nevis to be nice again. A new direction is coming. That is what we want for you and we want you to want that for yourselves. And so the opportunity is there and we hope that you're going to take it, run with it and join the NRP in this federal election and then get ready to join us again in the local election that will surely follow thereafter. And so, the visions, we've got to reject the message of divisiveness and disrespect. We recognize that the other side has tried their utmost best to run a smear campaign in nasty tactic. I understand that one of them with submarine mentality, probably as useless as an astronaut on a diving expedition, has sought to call our leader a nobody. But it is that somebody that is causing you heartburn. It is that somebody that is causing you sleepless nights. It is that somebody that is causing you to worry. It is that somebody that is causing you to carry a burden that you didn't think you would have to carry. And I want to tell you that it is that somebody that is about to replace you. You're going to learn. You're going to learn to give respect. Somebody you move from poolhouse to palace and all of a sudden, are you more than people? Yeah. But I want to tell you, you see Dr. Bartlett? You see Dr. Hodge and myself are holy and none of us have ever run from our own truths. You have tried everything and everything you have tried have failed because we are people of integrity and honesty and that is something you cannot buy. Nevis, Nevisians, I want to tell you tonight, better days are coming. Better days are coming and so before I wrap up, I want to tell you very briefly, our plans are still here for you. Star Institute is still here for young people. We can be the leaders in technology and research. Our young people are as bright as any, anywhere in the world. But they need the opportunities to advance that. The NRP is set to provide that. Our families are hurting and as a result of that, we are saying to you, we want to bring a family relief package to you. $10,000, one-time grant payment. That is going to afford you the opportunity to get caught up with your mortgage and your rent, to give Netflix some money so that they can stop disconnecting your utilities and to give you some money for discretionary spending. Listen, we understand. We understand the difficulties you face. We understand the challenges you face in the supermarket aisle, looking at things that your pocket can afford. Standing next to the cashier, hoping that whatever she rings up you can pay for because you don't want to have the situation of having to put it back. We understand what it's like to sit quietly with tears coming down your eyes, not knowing if you can pay the utility bills. We understand the frustrations, the fear and pain you feel when you know not where the next meal is going to come from. I want to say to you, night, tomorrow, Friday, the end to that is coming when you vote for NRP. That is why we have come here because we believe in prospering people. You are our focus. It is Nevis first. It is Nevis first, Nevis first, and Nevis first. And if Nevis is first, then so shall be the Nevisian people. Power your homes. Something Dr. Bartlett started, I just coined the phrase. Where you have the opportunity... Where you have the opportunity to put solar panels on your homes to really, to reduce the cost of the electricity. And with that, you have an opportunity to send what you don't use back into the grid. Give yourself some more money. These are real plans designed to help our people. And while we are on that, we want to be able to deal with the drought situation and the water rationing. And in the short term and the medium term, we want to encourage you to get into rain harvesting. And if you don't have a system, we want to provide the opportunity for you to be able to acquire a storage tank. And because we're in the 21st century, we're putting on water pumps and those. So when the water rationing begin, you turn on your system, water flowing to your house, you ain't have a problem at all. Real plans with real purpose for the people of Nevis. That is why we are here. We ain't come to talk no rear end, no cuss. You see, when people cuss is because they have nothing meaningful to contribute. I wonder if you realize that the gentleman has hid his teammates. He hide them. They can't go on any radio show. They can't face any media. They can only go where he say, which is on his show. Because whenever they open them out, is a whole heap of human feces. A tonload of BS. One guy told the people of Gingerland, some of you who are not employed, it is by design. This is a representative of the people. This is a man who have said to people, vote for me. And you're telling people it is a design that they don't have a job? And that when the elections are over, they will still have no job? Gingerlanders look inside you and see if what he said to you was the truth because I can guarantee you there are many of you without a job. You cannot go into August 5th granting this naysayer, this failure in democracy and opportunity to repeat those kind of craziness to you. But he wasn't done. He wasn't done. You know, he decided to make a contribution in commentary, making humans akin to donkeys. The donkeys can't vote. So we knew exactly what he was saying. And that if people with sense had voters ID, they wouldn't vote for him. But you see, that is an insult to the people who don't support him and the people who support him. And you have got to recognize that. And he wasn't done. He said to you, if you ain't voting for Sisir, who I really don't call the Nevisian about, stay home. This is a man who sits in the Nevis Island administration. A man who publicly for the world to see went against the democratic principles of countries and governments around the world when people are asking our constituents and our voters to go out and vote, be a part of the process. It is what the system requires you to do. He is saying to you, if you're not voting in number nine for them, if you're not voting in number 10 for them, if you're not voting in number 11 for them, that you shouldn't vote. I want to tell you number nine, number 10 and number 11. If you don't intend to suffer pass the 5th of August, if you don't intend to have frustrations, if you don't intend to sit in fear and wonder, you need to get up, get out and vote. And when you done vote, call him and tell him you can go home. Sit down, find something else to do. The NRP will never insult your intelligence and never seek to ask you to not participate in the democratic process. Jaydy said something tonight and I, I reflect. When I first came on, you know, they said, nobody gonna vote for you. You ain't from Gingerland. Then that didn't work. As the campaign gained momentum, they say Isles oh. That no work either. Cause you got the hole in Nevis oil. That didn't work. You try something else, you send your pit bulls, they come left, they come right. But I want you to take a good look at this back here. I want you to take a very good look at this back here. It ain't broad for any reason. I was raised by a strong woman filled with integrity and honesty. People like you could never move me. Gingerland, Gingerland, I've said to you time and time again, your constituency is filled with potential, ready to be unearthed so that the people herein can have prosperity, sustain prosperity, prosperity for today, tomorrow and after that. I have come for this work, so sign me up. I have come for this work. Serious business requires serious leadership. That is why I am here. Supporting the NRP, supporting Dr. Janice Daniel Hodge and supporting Dr. Patricia Bartlett. And so the eighteen hundred and four of you that are registered, I have no problem begging you for your support because I am confident in my ability to deliver for you. Confident in my ability to prosper you. And so on Election Day, come to vote and vote for the Nevis Reformation Party. Vote for your candidates and show that you are out early and vote. That's been my time. I'll see you tomorrow. What will your legacy be? Good night. God bless you and I love you.
NRP, let me hear you make some noise for Rohan Isles. While I was sitting over there, I got a message and somebody said wherever the courage representative there, he frightened her. Ladies and gentlemen, Rohan is the man with the plan. And on Election Day, we are voting for Isles in number 10. Now, if you are registered to vote in Gingerland, that's Nevis 10, your polling stations are the New River Methodist Church, the Gingerland Preschool, the Handley's Road Community Center has two boxes, the Hard Times Building and the Gingerland High School. Those are the polling stations in Nevis 10. So please take note of those. Ladies and gentlemen, we have one more speaker to go. So I wanted to get ready and I wanted to, to, to start coming close. But I want to remind you of a few things. You remember that over these past couple of years, particularly in the last two years or so, every time we talk about something, it was always an excuse, there isn't any money. No money there. There is no money. But you realize the five percent that you did not get. You see where he gone? No money to pay you five percent. However, we got money given out left, right and center on the island of Nevis to win an election. No money to properly subsidize electricity on the island of Nevis. But we have money to give people paraphernalia after paraphernalia. We got money to spend on the eve of an election. They were in a federal government. We are there, they told us to strengthen their hand. And so we strengthened their hand and sent them to Saint Kitts. And they could not deliver for us on the island of Nevis. And so on Friday, we must reject the Concern Citizens Movement and any other party makeshift or otherwise that is coming up against the Nevis Reformation Party. Because I maintain that the NRP is the only choice for the people of Nevis. Do you agree with me? We want quality representation and we want quality leadership. You understand? Let me tell you something. Somebody tell me that all the momentum they talking about is nothing more than intimidation. They frightened whether they, they have a sense of obsession with the candidates of the Nevis Reformation Party. You know me don't call names. But they say some of them home, instead they lie down in their bed and sleep with their wife. They getting up in the middle of the night, pat, 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 pat. That's all them a talk about, pat, 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 pat. That's all them a talk about, pat, 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 pat. They say some of them, they can't sleep in the house because when they reach by the step at nighttime, all they ever see, Janice, 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 Janice. That's all them a see by the step. Everything, everywhere they go, Janice, Janice, Janice. They say some of them, when they lie down at night, all them a talk, Rohan, 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 Rohan. That is the level of obsession they have with the Nevis Reformation Party. The same party they say wasn't ready. The same party they say was weak. The same party they say can't win an election, but they obsessed with the candidates of the NRP. Let me tell you something. No weapon that is formed against the Nevis Reformation Party shall prosper. I've been afraid, win afraid. And that is why I want every one of you under the sound of my voice to come out in your numbers on Friday and vote out the Concern Citizens Movement and vote in the Nevis Reformation Party. You think we playing? You think we playing? The future of your children is at stake right now. The future of your grandchildren is at stake right now. Forget how much you like them. Forget how much they are your friends. They have proven to you time and time again, they are not for you. They can't deliver for you. So young men and young women do not be fooled by the money that they bringing now. That is short term. It is because they think that you can be bought. How come they never offer me no money? Because they know they can't buy me. They know they can't buy me. And so, to the young men and young women in Charles Town, whether you live Lower Stony Grove, Hamilton, Government Road, Lost Street, Quaddock Road, Bart Road, Main Street, Happy Hill, Marion Avenue, Ramsbury, wherever you live in Charles Town, do this for me. I want you on Election Day to vote for Dr. Patricia Bartlett. You already told me that you are going to give me your support when the local comes around. But guess what? To get me there, you have to help out Dr. Bartlett right now. To get me there, you have to vote in Dr. Patricia Bartlett. That is getting me one step closer to delivering for you. And you know I'm not gonna turn you down. You know I'm not gonna deny you. So if I say I have every confidence in the doc with the right prescription, it is so. I won't lead you wrong. Ladies and gentlemen, get to your feet. Get to your feet as we welcome the final speaker. This lady, man, she's a tower of strength. You see, man, she comes and she's not afraid of any challenge. Not afraid of any challenge. And that is why we have to lift her up. We have to lift her up because she needs all the support she can get. Because on Election Day, I have a feeling that she is going to remove, she is going to remove the sitting representative for Nevis Nine. It is time for him to go. It is time for him to go. On your mark, get set, go. It is time for him to go. Ladies and gentlemen, coming from Brown Hill, the lady who is the best choice for Nevis Nine, the doc with the right prescription. Ladies and gentlemen, help me bring on Dr. Patricia Bartlett.
Nevis, I hope them hear this. NRP, Nevis Reformation Party. Show me you are nephew voting. For NRP, you know we voting. Yeah, show me you are. We voting for NRP, the performance party. The other party a comedy like them want for a coming movie. We vote NRP, the performance party. The other party a comedy like them want for a coming movie. Show me you are nephew voting. For NRP, you know we voting. Show me you are nephew voting for progress. I got this feeling, feeling wonderful feeling. Let me see the young them not touch out the ceiling. We gonna live in love again. I got this feeling, feeling wonderful feeling. Keep the faith and keep on believing.
NRP people. NRP people. Forty-eight hours. We giving them forty-eight hours. The countdown starts from now. We have forty-eight hours to reckon. Nevis 10, you ready? Nevis 11, you ready? Now, I'm gonna ask Nevis Nine if you're ready. I know Nevis Nine ready. Now. Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right. I am not that kind of doctor. I'm not dealing with any social or psychological issues tonight. So the person in Brown Hill walking around, we gonna have to refer somebody to them, right? Good. So look now, we are here and, you know, I can't believe, I really can't believe the turn of events. You know? But my grandmother used to say, never a bad wind blow. Never a bad wind blow. You know? Because in the language of the poor, the language of the oppressed and the language of the exploited, this is called divine intervention. Patsy, you should know. This is what we call divine intervention. Because we know, we know we were not supposed to be here now. We are three years early. So that is giving us an opportunity to reset. Giving us a grand opportunity to reset. The Almighty saw that, you know, the ordinary citizens and the ordinary residents, you know, God love his people. You see all of these God fearing people out here like Patsy and her and her and her and him over here? They have been praying. And so now, we are here two years early, two years out of five year term. So guess what? We cannot squander this opportunity. We can't squander it. Because, you know, we now have an opportunity to purge them, to get rid of them. We can get rid of this gang. And they used to say, never, you must not look a gift horse in the mouth. Patsy, you know what that mean? Do not look a gift horse in the mouth. So let me translate that for the young people who never heard that before. All is simply saying is, do not refuse something good when it is offered to you. And you have three brand new candidates that is something good. So make sure you support them. Because the support, the support you give to them is gonna come back full circle. They will support you. I can bet you that nobody on this ticket, not Rohan, not Dr. Janice Daniel Hodge and definitely not Patricia. We wouldn't let you down. Your interests are our interests. We represent your interests. You know? On August the 1st, I had to take some little, a little time just to reflect on where we are. Because you know, when this party was formed, it had all to do with the Because you know when this party was formed, it had all to do with the Christina. People going to synchets for everything. We had to go to synchets if you wanted to catch a plane. Well, what difference today? We still got to go synchets to catch plane. Even though we had an, hey, there you go. We had an airport that was doing well. All they had to do was build on the successes of the people before. And they couldn't do that. They couldn't do that, as simple as that. So I tell you, do not look a gift horse in the mouth. It is time for us to make a change. This is a critical. This is a critical. You hear me, Patsy? I say critical. And what that mean? It mean this is a do or die moment for us here in Nevis. If we do not change this government now, as the old people used to say, sufferation down the road for you. This is our opportunity to change things around. So take it seriously. Take it seriously, people. I'm hearing too many people say that they're not going to vote. Now, how does that make sense? How did we get here? We got here with people don't want to vote because they've been disappointed. But I would think that a logical thing to do, if you're disappointed with those you have chosen before, get rid of them. Get rid of them. I'm not trying to suggest to you that they're not gonna try to bombard you because we know it's happening. So they gonna bring the money, but like I said, do what the premier say. Just take the money and vote him out. Take the money and vote against him. No, I'm not supposed to say that. Let me take it back because I'm a law abiding citizen and I don't believe in bribery. So take the money. No, you didn't want none? Okay. Well, don't take the money, Julie. But whatever you do, whether you get money or not, vote against them. They do not deserve your trust. You have invested your trust in them for seven years and they couldn't deliver. They could not deliver. So what they coming back to you for? Why are they back before you? Asking you to send them back to Bastille? Because they say, some red hair in the town, they say something about fear share, that that is an issue. And then I asked them, well, what are you gonna do when you go back so that you get the fear share? They said they have no plan. No plan? Every time you ask them one thing, they answer you something totally different. So I asked them, what is your plan? And all I'm hearing, well, send us back to Bastille. That's all I'm hearing, send us back to Bastille, no plan. But the thing is, it is not unheard of. For every time NRP comes out with a plan or program, they just copy and paste. So I'm just waiting on them to come to the realization that what we have been proposing to fix the problem is indeed the way they gonna, well, they don't get a chance to go back. But when we go, that is the first order of business. We gonna just fix the fear share issue. As a matter of fact, I already said that we gonna retire the notion of fear share. So I had this bright friend, right here in Nevis. Nevis people bright, you know? Devon people bright. But guess what? This friend called me and said to me, do not say that you're gonna settle the fear share matter. Explain to the people how you're gonna deliver on the full share for Nevis. Because fear share for them mean you get forty-five million dollars, you know? When you could have gotten sixty. But for them, they think that that is fear, but that is not the full amount that is due to us. So fear is a relative term that we're not gonna deal with. My friend says to me to tell them that they should ask for our full share. And what do I mean by our full share? I've said it before, but for the benefit of those people who just left on that side and are on this side now, let me just take two minutes just to fill you in. We've been going to synchets asking for the gravy. The gravy is the passport money. But what we have not been doing is going to synchets to collect the meat. And the meat of the matter is this. We are entitled to twenty-five percent of all the taxes that we collect within the small fiscal space of synchets in Nevis. Our CCM government or administration has been shortchanging us. They have not been collecting on our behalf. So they come and they make noise for something that the prime minister say, well, they making noise over here, they didn't realize what they losing on that side. And so he has been pampering them. He say, okay, well, you come, you want fifteen, he gave them fifteen. They come, they say they want it increased, he gave them some more. But he's looking at the bigger picture. He looking at they losing on one end, but they not paying any attention to that. What we are saying is, get back to the revenue sharing mechanism that was spelled out in the Constitution that allows Nevis people to get twenty-five percent of the revenues from taxes that are collected in synchets in Nevis. That is only fear. Because Judy, you know, when you go synchets, you go down there go spend your money on Kentucky Fried Chicken. You pay taxes down there, but there's nothing in there, no mechanism to capture that and make sure that you get to twenty-five percent in Nevis. So we are saying, these guys are short sighted. They are not looking at the bright, the bigger picture. And so they are losing monies on the one end while they making noise on the other end for the little bit that somebody at their discretion decide to give to them. We're saying no. We saying we have to fix it and we have to have a holistic approach. Meaning that we gonna take everything into consideration to make sure that Nevis gets its full share and stop making noise about this fear share story. Because you're missing out, you're missing the bigger picture. So we saying, when we go to Bastille, not if. Because we are, in this, at this point in time, we know we going. So we are saying, when we go to Bastille, we are gonna say, look, we are here to represent the people of Nevis. The Constitution did not make allowance for us to get our fear share as the claim from the non-tax revenues. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna make sure that we make a proposal. Make sure that we have the laws to take to Parliament, to make the necessary adjustment, to make the amendment to Constitution so that Nevis could get what Nevis really and truly deserves. That is not asking for anything less. That is not asking, and what we've, what we've been getting is representation that went there and said, well, we are here, whatever you give us, we will take. But just make sure you pass this thing for me partner. Make sure that my colleague has a project there working on. Make sure that that get passed and we not gonna make too much noise. Because in December, they were willing to accept on our behalf just forty-five million dollars for Nevis. But we didn't know about the hundred and twenty million dollars that somebody was getting. But you see, when mouth open, story jump out. But you're gonna tell them, you know, not this time. We are not sending you to Bastille, not this time. Tell them when they come, and I know that they're gonna come. Because within recent times, they've been coming. They never used to come last election cycle, the one before, they never used to come. They just used to send the brown paper bag, you know that? But now they are coming. So when they come, tell them, this federal election is about electing people who are gonna go to synchets to represent your interests. Not people who going to synchets to represent their interests. Tell them that you want somebody to represent you in nine, in ten, and eleven. All. And they don't fit the bill. We have tried them and they came up short. They are not fit for purpose. We do not want them to represent us anymore. Because we realize, when we send them, it is not about us. It is just about them and that must change. It seems to me that they either they don't care or they don't know what the interests of the people on Nevis are. They don't know what our issues are because they just start to come. And when they come, they're not even coming to ask you how things. They come in and all they gonna say is, well, send us back to Bastille. Send us back to Bastille, that is all they pleading. Why you gonna send them back to Bastille? I wouldn't imagine why. Because as you have said to us when we have been coming around, you have issues related to high electricity costs. Me not hear them a talk about that. I don't hear them saying that on their platform. Even though I don't follow them much, but they're not saying how they're gonna address the issue of the high electricity costs that you and I have to bear every day. We over here bawling about surcharge. Synchets people don't even know any of them so. Because that is not something that's applied over there. Because when Skelek in synchets, getting all kind of help to the free cost so that synchets people don't have to pay this surcharge. Nevlek in Nevis doesn't have any representation. The same ministers we have in Nevis go down to synchets, sit at the table at cabinet when they negotiating to give Skelek help and then ask for help for Nevlek so they could pass it on. So they don't care about your high electricity bill. So it's gonna continue to be high because there's nothing in place to give you any relief. They don't care about that. They don't care about inflation neither. Because me hear them a talk about that. All me hear them a talk about is fear share. So when you go supermarket and things cost twice as much as they used to cost last week, nobody telling you how they're gonna address that for you. But we have said that we recognize why we have inflation so high in Nevis in particular. Because if you buy a piece of bread in Nevis for ten dollars, in synchets you go get it almost sometimes for five. We recognize what the issues are. But we are saying, we can do something about inflation. But it takes political will. It means we have to stop taxing our people so much, man. Imagine you buy something in America and by time it gets here, you buy it for twenty dollars. By time it gets here, you have to pay two hundred dollars to take it to customs. How could that be fear to you and I? That can't be right. What we are saying is reduce the tax burden on the poor people. So you have VAT. You criticize Doug Doug so much about the VAT that was imposed. You say it is seventeen percent. Now, you've been here for several long years and you tell me you can't do something about that? You don't care about the people enough to at least consider reducing the VAT? Only at Christmas time you could have a little something? We have to struggle for all the rest of the year? But that can't be right. What we are saying is, we must address inflation. And one of the ways of doing it is to make sure that the taxes, we reduce the tax burden on our people. And if we had, and if we had to make the decision tonight, we would reduce it to ten percent, take off at least seven, make it much easier for people to be able to survive here in Nevis. Now, they don't want us to talk about poverty. Poverty staring you in your face every day. People begging for food, people begging for this, people begging for that. Not because they don't have any dignity, they had. But the thing is, the economic crunch is so bad for most of us that some of us have to reach out for help. That is not good enough. Our government must recognize that when they stepped in, poverty was only at twenty-one percent. And I say only because it could have been worse at that time. But now, under dear leadership, poverty is now at thirty-one percent. So you had a ten, a fifty percent increase in poverty. Now, if I tell you that we have a poverty rate of thirty percent, it mean that, you see those ten people standing in the border there? Three of them poor. Three of them living below the poverty line, that is thirty percent right over there. So they must make an effort to reduce that. But what I'm hearing, they want to just increase the PAP. Now, I have nothing against PAP, so please don't misquote me. Because you have some people bad and mischievous and like to confuse the ordinary persons. Deliberately so, and I don't like it. I don't like it. Do not take advantage, do not exploit our people. They don't need to exploit us any further. What I'm saying as it relates to PAP is that we cannot just continue to make people feel comfortable in this place that they in as it relates to poverty. Almost said the wrong thing. But we cannot say you're poor, give you five hundred dollars and all that five hundred dollars does is just to keep you in your poverty, make you feel comfortable. Because you now get to pay your lights bill and your water bill and maybe little food. And they leave you right there. And then instead of making, and the thing is, you know, these people are use data, but they use it for the wrong reason. They want to increase the number of people to put on PAP. I mean, the premier over here making noise saying, well, I can't get to put anybody on PAP. What you want to put anybody on PAP for? The objective should be for him to try to get us off of PAP. We must have a strategy in place. We must have policies in place to get people out of poverty and not leave them in poverty and make them feel comfortable at that level. So we have plans for all that. But you know, one of the other things that, and this afternoon I met with some young fellas and I was so impressed. These guys, they grill me. They grill me. I went to the meeting and I felt, you know, a little timid because I'm like, they're gonna ask me for money, you know, and I don't have. But that is not what all young people are about. People want to make you think that all them young fellas around here want is money. That's not so. I met with a group of fellas this afternoon and they grill me about jobs. They grill me about marijuana, they grill me about, you name it, they grill me about it. Because they wanted to know what plans you have in place for the young fellas. And we're not seeing that. Nobody addressing that. People in power. Because that's what it is, they're just in power. They're not representing us. But the people who we thought were supposed to be representing us, not addressing these problems. So joblessness amongst the youth is not being addressed and we can't continue like this. We cannot continue like this. We must hold these people responsible for the promises that they would have made. Because, you know, even after the federal election, we still have couple more months of them, you know? We still have a couple more months of sufferation in this place because they are in control. So we have to think, start thinking ahead, how we gonna get them out? Because we have to get them out at the federal level as well as the local level. Now, one of the other issues that really, I mean, it pains me to see that this is still happening in 2022. The substandard healthcare system that we have in this country. And I am not casting any aspersions on the nurses, the good nurses and the doctors because I know they trying. But everything, everything related to healthcare has just been put on automatic pilot, it seems. Nobody addressing the issues. Nobody addressing the issues of the hospital. I mean, we get complaints time and time again. And in the meantime, all people are getting sick, all people are dying, all people have to go on the street, beg money so that they could go away. And that ought to be something that they should be thinking deep and hard about fixing. Because you know what? Sickness not have no friend, you know? Sickness not have no friend. So because they think that they're comfortable now, let them leave government tomorrow and they'll see. So I'm appealing to them, you better go fix the health system as best as you can with the little time that you have left. Because you might fall prey to the same system that you're subjecting our poor people to, our ordinary people who deserve better. We deserve better. But my problem with us is that we are not demanding better. And sometimes I get, you know, I really sometimes lose my patience with my people. Because I find we have people here who could talk, but we're not talking. And I'm saying to us, stop being selfish. You might be okay. You might be okay. But your neighbor over the fence, they may be struggling. So you have to take on the responsibility, you're looking out for your neighbors. Because that's the way we were brought up. And if you are not brought up that way, I mean that you're missing out on something. We have to become our brother's keeper. We have to have some concern for other people. One of the other issues that these young fellows grilled me on today was education and skills training. And they were decriing the state of our skills training, our lack of a system to deliver skills training for the young men. The young men who might have left school because at that time they had no interest really in studying. But now they recognize that they have skills, but they just need to make sure that they get the proper training. They just want to make sure that they could get certified and they want to make sure that they could be licensed so they can compete. They should be able to compete in their own country. But we have to make sure that we equip our people to make sure that they are skilled, they are trained, they are certified, and they are licensed in order to operate and make some money in their own country. They shouldn't have to migrate to do that. And then the final issue that I think I want to bring tonight and other people would have touched on it is the issue of corruption. Now, they seem to think, the gang of three seem to think that the young people are not paying attention. But you know, the young people are paying attention and they are asking questions. They are asking questions. They are asking questions. And when they ask questions, we should be able to answer them. Because you see, we were promised good governance. And I went to P A's to explain what good governance was all about over in Fountain, you remember? And so a lot of people took it almost as if it were a lecture. And so now they are dialoguing with me, asking about these issues related to good governance and accountability. But we have to make sure that we continue to ask the hard question. We have to put aside all the distractions because you see, all these distractions are not getting any traction. And so they're gonna continue. They're gonna discard one distraction and move on to the next one because they don't want you to ask the hard questions. So someone asks me, "If on principle, the architect minister is gonna give back some of the money for the plan that was badly designed for the Alexandria Hospital?" Now, what am I supposed to say? I am not in a position to demand that. Had I been in position, he probably wouldn't have gotten the job. But this is a question that I think that they need to address because people want to know. If you take somebody out of your own cabinet, take somebody out of your own group, at the end of the day, they ought to do things to make you look good. But what happened is that this boy just draw something and just dash it give them and they use it. And now we can't get our hospital expansion completed. Now, that is a waste of our money, but it goes to what we call accountability. They must account for how they give people contracts. They must account for when they give people big money that they get value for money because it's our money, it's not their money. Now, someone asked me also to ask about the Mondo track. Now, these are hard questions that I think that they should have been asking the other side when they come. But apparently they're not taking the time to explain to people who the bleachers at the Mondo track belong to and how much they paying them every month. That is called accountability. So when people ask the question, I wish they didn't ask me. I wish they would ask them. But the thing is, I have to put it out there. So they're listening and they're always listening. So instead of going on the radio and trying to make up stuff on our leader, go on the radio and tell the people what they want to hear. Get to the earwaves and answer the questions that have been asked. When someone asks me about the Vet building, a building that started since I used to work there and that is a long, long time I retire. You know, they laugh after me and say that I'm in retirement. I mean, to now, to this day, the Vet building is still not completed. But people want to know. Ask them the hard questions when they come. So as it relates to the road, somebody told me today that the roads they want fixing. I said, "Well, that is the function of government. You must be able to fix the roads. That is why they are charging us real tax and all that. Monies ought to be set aside to make sure that we fix the roads." Somebody asked me about a curb machine. Now, I don't know nothing about curb machine, but someone wants to know which one of the ministers the curb machine belong to and how much he's being paid to use the curb machine from the government. Now, these are questions that when you guys get on the rostrum, you need to answer to the people, answer the questions that have been asked because that is what we call accountability. Stop with the foolishness, going out making up things about what people say and what people ain't say. Because you see, what we have here is a lack of integrity for the most part. And people have been asking as well. "Well, how come the integrity, the public, the Integrity in Public Life Commission cannot do the job? How come?" And I had to explain that they have legislation that govern the work of these people, but it doesn't have any teeth. It does not give them the authority to do the kind of investigative work that we require to know what is what and know who would have gotten two hundred and twenty shears since last year and nobody else knows about it. Those are the kind of questions that need to be asked and answered. Because you see, the thing is, people are getting riled up because they hear about these people who are getting so much on one end and they themselves are trying, are living hand to mouth, cannot get to, at least they're trying to start float. Just holding on, just holding on until when? Deliverance Day. But when is Deliverance Day? Nobody know when is Deliverance Day? So Friday, me not to you. So you're not, you're not looking forward to Friday? Well, you got to get up and you got to tell them, "This is the day that the Lord has made. This is the day that we throw you out." So Friday, we don't want no excuses. Get up early. I don't care if you drink tea or not. Whatever you're accustomed to drinking in the morning, settle for that and make sure you head to the polls. Don't wait for no rental car to come pick you up. You're accustomed to walk, walk. You're accustomed for your friend to give you a ride? Get that, so do that, make that as an excuse. Don't say that N R P not bring no rental car and so we can't get to go to the polls. That is not an excuse. Get up and find your way to the polls if you want to be delivered. If you want to be delivered. Because for too long now, we have seen our people struggle unnecessarily. We have seen too many of our people struggle while some of the anointed few, those who think that they go to church and they're still sponging off people. They're still creaming off the top. Eh? They're still doing all that. And so you deserve better. So make sure on Friday morning, you make your acts. Make your presence felt. Make sure you take the space that is rightly yours. And those people who are out there, you know that your people, your party has not performed. I am not inviting you to be a paid member. I am not even asking you to come and be a member of the N R P. That's not what we asking. What we asking you for is to vote in your best interests. Vote in your best interests. Do not sit home. So because you vote for a party that makes you a part of them, I hear the premier with some foolishness because one time I was foolish enough to vote for him. And he going around telling people, "Oh, she gonna vote for me," you know? I mean, really? I, yeah, I believe. He lost it. The man has lost it. Why would I want to vote for him? I don't even think that you, well, never mind. Don't let me go there. But I don't think that the people who you think go vote for him going really vote for him. But he's just making a, of himself, you know? He's making a spectacle of himself. That is a decent word to use. He's making a spectacle of himself. But he's accustomed to doing it and getting away with it. So, you know, he has nothing else left to say because when we ask him, "Well, how you can take your colleagues' business to the cabinet, the federal cabinet, ahead of the business of the people of Nevis?" Then what he say? "Oh, my cousin Pat gonna vote for me." I don't know what nonsense is that. So we are appealing to the people out there and we know we have a lot of intelligent people in Nevis. Ninety-eight percent literate. We are ninety-eight percent literate. So let us go out on Friday and demonstrate to him that we ain't no fool. You fooled us once, but you ain't gonna fool us again. This is a day of reckoning. In forty-eight hours. In forty-eight hours. In forty-eight hours. What we gonna do? Nevis ten, what you gonna do in forty-eight hours? Nevis eleven, what you gonna do in forty-eight hours? Nevis nine, what you gonna do in forty-eight hours? This is the day of reckoning and they don't seem to think that they deserve to go home. But we gonna just pack them nicely, put them in a nice little bundle and send them home. Get rid of them.
Ladies and gentlemen, let us hear it for Dr. Patricia Bartlett. I know I told you that she is going to be the final speaker, but we have just one more person who's going to speak briefly and it's to the Spanish community. And so, "Allá comunidad de española. Bienvenido Alexi Phipps hablales." Ladies and gentlemen, let us welcome Alexi Phipps to speak to the Spanish community.
Buenas noches, gente. ¿Dónde están los hispanos que están apoyando en el PIP en esta noche? Los cuales van a salir el día cinco de agosto para votar por NLP. Es tiempo ya. It's the time de mover al partido CCN de esa posición. It's the time to remove CCN from that position. CCN has detenido a Nevi por completo. CCN gonna be destroying Nevi for completely time. Es necesario el día cinco. Cada hispano, cada dominicano, cada colombiano, cada mexicano ir a las una votar por NLP. Necesitamos que saquemos a este partido de posición. Es urgente. Nevi se va a morir si sigue en el poder. It's necessary we move CCN from the power. If CCN continuing the power, Nevi die. Es necesario moverlo el cinco de agosto. El cinco de agosto vamos a votar por NLP. Vamos a votar por la Constitución nueve por la doctora Patricia Bartlett. Vamos a votar por la Constitución cien por Johan Hart. Vamos a votar por la Constitución once por la doctora Dani Daniel Hart. Es tiempo, es tiempo ya de un cambio. Es tiempo ya de tener otra posición. Es tiempo ya de decirle a CCN, "No! No más, ya basta, ya basta. Ya basta de abusar de Nevi. Ya basta de robarle a Nevi. Ya basta de que usen a la comunidad hispana para ir al poder y no ayudar a la comunidad hispana. Es tiempo ya. It's the time to remove CCN. CCN just using the Spanish community to helping, to supporting election time. But when in election time, Pa, what he doing for the Spanish community? Es necesario, es tiempo ya. It's the time. It's the time, it's the moment to remove this party from the power. Escuche algo, de quinientos millones de dólares. I hear something about five hundred million dollars years in Nevis, right? But nobody think. When me hear that, I don't sleep in. You know why? When me take my calculator, you know what I'm gonna say? Nevi got fifty thousand people and five hundred million disappear. For people, the Nevi had to get thirty-three million and thirty-three thousand easy. I have some question for somebody else. Who get thirty-three million in hand right now? Nobody else. We are the money gang. I am Hispanic, but I live in Nevi. I want to know the government explain to everybody in Nevi what he do with the money for Nevi. He say in the radio station, "The money not good for pay the salary for the hard people in Nevi." But not everybody work in the government. Nadie trabaja tanto en el gobierno para tocar treinta y tres millones de easy. Three hundred thirty-three mil. El gobierno tiene que explicarle a la población dónde está el dinero. ¿Cuántos dominicanos habemos sin salario? Sin empleo. ¿Cómo many Spanish people don't have no employ? ¿Cómo cuantas personas locales de Nevi no tienen empleo? ¿Cómo many local people in Nevi don't have no employ? Don't work, no, 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 no. Entonces, les aconsejo a cada dominicano, les recuerdo que el día cinco de agosto, como dije en Bad Billy's la otra noche. I say in Bad the other night. When you awake up in the morning, fi, agot, put the bottle in your hand and your hand. Think about just about the bottle and think about no, no. Just think about the bloody gun to body, put your butter in your eyes. Pone la lira ex in the middle. Pon una equis pequeña en el medio y vota por NLP. Solamente quiero que ganemos, que le demostremos a ese partido que NLP sí puede hacerlo mejor que ellos.
Muchas gracias, Alexi. Alexi, Alexi, Alexi. Ladies and gentlemen, before you leave, I just want to remind you where you should be voting if you are registered in Nevis nine. That's very, very important. And remember to verify where you should be voting before Friday. Okay? So polling station one in Nevis nine, the Church of God of Prophecy. Listen up, listen up. Two A, Elizabeth Pemberton Primary School. Two B, St. John's Primary School and X. Three A, Ivor Walters Primary School. Three B, Ivor Walters Primary School and so is three C. So there are three boxes at Ivor Walters Primary. Three D, Cicely Brown Integrated School. Four A and B, the Education Building at Marion Heights. Four C, the United Pentecostal Church at Marion Heights. Five A and B, the Alberta Payne Community Center in Bath. Six A and B, the Methodist Conference Center. Seven, the Magistrate Court. Eight A and B, Charleston Primary School. And nine, the Courthouse. Ladies and gentlemen, I have shared with you this evening the polling stations for all three constituencies. And remember, if you are voting in Nevis nine, we have some hotline numbers. Six six seven, six seven eight zero. Seven six two, six five nine eight. Seven six two, six one five seven. Six six two, seven three six five. Seven six five, nine three seven six. And for any updates, please feel free to visit the N R P's Facebook page. We will continue to update you there. Do not be afraid to make a call. Whenever you are unsure, reach out. Do not stay home and say you thought. If a be no, always comes too late. Ladies and gentlemen, I wish you safe passage to your homes. But before you go, I want to remind you that tomorrow, we have the grand finale. We have a whistle stop tomorrow starting at three, or four, four. Starting at four in St. George, Gingerland. And in the evening, we will have our final meeting of this campaign over in Newcastle in Nevis eleven, where Dr. Janice Daniel Hodge was launched. And so I want everybody out in their numbers. Ladies and gentlemen, N R P people, are you ready?